All right. We will call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Let me hang up my cellphone and turn off the ringer. I'm sorry, you guys. So, we're going to have the invocation done by Greg Butler. Thank you very much, followed by the flag salute by Councilmember Schwenk. So, would please stand for the invocation.
Please bow your head as we pray. Heavenly Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the enjoyment of good health. Thank you for allowing us to experience true friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. I pray for our council members, myself, my colleagues assembled here this evening. I ask that you would grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues we face, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the residents we serve, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there are honest disagreements, personal peace in our lives and fulfillment in completing our tasks. Grant our council the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true when considering the agenda set before us this evening. May they speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they always be guided by the spirit of the community. Please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Temecula. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Will you all join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, could we call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protam. Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
I'm here.
And Mayor Protam Edwards?
Here. So, we will move on to public comments. Randy, do you want to go ahead and read the instructions?
Yes. And, Madam Mayor Protam, we do have several public comments, about forty or so, so I will beg your patience and indulgence as we go through on non-adjournedized items.
So, each one of those will be read into the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, as I was saying, Madam Mayor Protam, we do have several public comments on non-adjournedized items and no public comments on the consent calendar. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of the agenda. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. The first comment is by Brian and Christine O'Neil. And they state, "We support all budget spending for law enforcement and public safety in Temecula. We greatly appreciate the excellent service we have received from the members of law enforcement and first responders team. Sincerely, Brian and Christine O'Neil, thirty years Temecula homeowners." The next speaker is Ed Gorham, and he writes, "Isn't it time Temecula had its own police force? Perhaps it could be about half the size it is now and make sure not to hire anyone who has ever used excessive force. Also, it would be good to hire people who live in Temecula or the Pachanga Reservation." The next speaker is Suzanne Lane, and she actually had a couple of emails that she sent in, so we'll just see if we can't read them all into the record up to three minutes. "I would like to comment on the June 18th guidance for use of masks posted in the California State Health Department website. This has been touted and repeated in many newspapers and online news sources as Governor Newsom issued an order that all Californians must wear masks. We do not live in a kingdom, and he is not the king that can make a proclamation and tell us what to do. He is one of three co-equal branches. He is administration. Even via executive order, he cannot legislate. He directs agencies such as the Health Department to issue orders, so Newsom cannot compel any individual to do anything. Next, the state public health guidance from June 18, 2020 is essentially a press release. It is not an order or mandate or law. If it were, it would reference the law being followed. Also, it would state what happens if not followed and the penal code section on it. If you look at what they posted, it has none of these and in fact says it is guidance. Yes, it says we must wear face coverings, but must is not a legally enforceable word. The word shall is enforceable. This is guidance and in fact is less restrictive than the one posted in April. Perhaps in a nefarious way, that is why so much media is portraying it as though we all have to wear them now, perhaps because they know it's less restrictive guidance and want to keep people in fear. Also, the guidance has a whole list of persons who are exempt from wearing a covering, including persons with a medical condition for whom wearing a mask covering could instruct breathing. I say this would apply to every human as our bodies require a certain level of oxygen to function correctly. Only a licensed medical professional is qualified to determine if someone is healthy enough to wear a mask as it negatively affects the respiratory, immune, and neurological systems. Also, HIPAA protects us from having to disclose our medical condition, so we are all free to not wear face coverings according to law. Plus, our sheriff will not enforce it. Social shaming is unacceptable. To shame me for not wearing a mask to protect you is unreasonable. When will it end? Will you forever wear a mask because there will always be a flu and diseases floating around? We need to breathe and interact and build our immunity. Also, there is no science to show that masks protect you at all. All seven studies noted on the CDC website are inconclusive. If someone wants to wear one, fine, but it is not an order and not enforceable. And please see California Civil Code Section 51.7a and b for actual law that protects us from discrimination in places of business. And please reference the latest FDA announcement requiring... I'm not really sure what goes there. The media has also twisted this. It actually means that it's not just restricted for hospital use now. Hydroxychloroquine. The most severe cases that they were seeing may not benefit as much, so it's open for everyone now. Any doctor can prescribe as he wishes. It's been around for decades." Okay, that is the three minutes. And again, she submitted two more emails. The next speaker is Mr. or Ms. Garrison. "We need to be united on enforcing the governor and the CDC guidelines on wearing masks. The health of our city depends on your leadership. This is not the time to cave to nonsense arguments. This is not about being liked or worrying about you being reelected. TBUSD School Board has one board member who agrees students should wear masks. She is married to a pediatrician. This is about saving lives, not popularity, not a popularity contest. We live in a destination city with people coming from all over. We need to protect our community by stopping the spread of COVID-19." The next speaker is Emily Carrion, and Emily writes, "My name is Emily Carrion, and I am a resident of Temecula. I write to call on our city council members to propose and implement a robust plan for protecting Temecula residents from police violence. They must reallocate funds for policing to social services that improve the quality of life, mental and physical health, housing and food security, and economic outcomes of Temecula residents. The purview of police has expanded immensely over the last several decades. We now ask police to respond to situations they are not trained for, including mental health crises, homelessness, and discipline problems in school. The simultaneous militarization of our police means that officers respond to situations they are not trained for with military-grade weapons. We must narrow the focus of police work to situations officers are actually trained for and reinvent some of the $38.5 million Temecula spends contracting with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department into addressing these fundamental social problems. As one example, Temecula should develop and fund a dedicated team of mental health care professionals who will provide immediate care to residents in crisis. In 2016, Matthew Tucker, an eighteen-year-old Temecula resident, called 911 when he experienced suicidal thoughts. Riverside County Sheriff's responded to the scene and shot and killed him. Imagine if Matthew had been able to call a licensed mental health professional who could have de-escalated the situation and connected him with long-term services. Because of the current budget priorities of our city, Matthew's best option was to call 911, and he was murdered." Some will object to defunding the police, saying decreasing police presence will make Temecula less safe, but one can argue that police presence made Matthew or his family feel safer. Decades of research show that our people of color, particularly black people, are subject to overpolicing, police harassment, and police violence. In other words, police presence makes people of color less safe. All four of the city council members promised action at the meeting on June 9th. The strongest, most impactful action they could take is to reduce our city's police budget and reinvest that money in Temecula residents." The next speaker is Julie Gary. "Hello, my name is Julie Gary, and I have been a resident of Temecula Valley since 1997. I am concerned that many businesses are not enforcing the mask order, putting their employees and customers at risk. Some businesses are not enforcing social distancing as well. The Riverside County Sheriff originally said that they would not enforce the mask order even though there is copious amounts of scientific evidence to the efficiency of the mask use. We have recently seen a dramatic spike in cases before the new mask order went into effect. I hope that the city takes this new order seriously and works with the Health Department to enforce this new rule." She's also provided some links to some articles. The next speaker is Tammy Meyer. "I am extremely concerned about the lack of mask-wearing I see in our city. Granted, the mask mandate only came from the state of California last week. This should have always been a requirement to reduce the exposure to this virus. Our local government, including the Sheriff's Department, must be a leader in this effort. When our city council representatives scoff at the idea of wearing a mask and our sheriff states that he will not enforce mask-wearing, you are telling us that you do not care about public health. Shame on you for that. Our infection rates are going up as a result of businesses going back to business as usual, and two Temecula businesses have closed down due to staff members being infected. You must understand that these businesses have put our community at a risk, and that is unacceptable. Mayor Edwards, please rise to the occasion. I know you love this community. Make the hard decision and mandate all businesses to require masks for their patrons and employees. Do the right thing before it's too late for the residents of Temecula." The next speaker is a concerned gymgoer without a identifiable name. "In light of the governor's new mask order that came down last week, I have concerns about local businesses who aren't enforcing the mandate. We all know that masks significantly contribute to reduced rates of infection, and I consider it the easiest way that I can contribute to the safety of my fellow residents. With that said, a majority of the COVID cases in Temecula stem from 92592, so it begs the question why businesses, gyms especially, who serve residents in that zip code, aren't enforcing mask-wearing by their customers. If a business is open, they should be following the rules. Most gyms in town are not outdoors, a caveat provided in the governor's orders. Exercise is important to us all during these times, and I'm a fierce lover of the gym, but it's deeply concerning to see Fitness 19 on Temecula Parkway dismiss public health recommendations and create their own rules that aren't being enforced. No doubt that this will backfire eventually, especially considering how far droplets can extend with forced exhalation, as seen with exercise. The standard six-foot rule may not be sufficient to protect others without a mask. Yes, working out with a mask isn't the easiest, but if we are all to enjoy the gym, it's important we all play by the same set of rules. If we are truly in this together, we need to protect one another and do our part." The next speaker is Kristi Ramos. "Please enforce the order from the governor about wearing masks. Several businesses are not adhering to the order and allowing customers to roam the aisles without social distancing and without masks. I understand this is a divisive issue, but we need to stop the spread of COVID in our community. The only way to do that is to follow the governor's orders. Also, who do I contact to make complaints to report those that are not following the orders? Thank you." The next speaker is Sydney Warren. "It's deeply concerning to me the blatant disregard the city of Temecula has shown in the wearing of face masks and coverings. With the Riverside County Sheriff's Department openly saying it would not enforce the California mandate and our own council members snarking at the idea of wearing a face covering, I fear that COVID-19 will continue to spread in our county like wildfire. I ask that this council and local government please rise to the occasion and begin enforcing this new mandate before more businesses close and more people become infected. Please, I implore the city of Temecula and its local government to promote masks and prevent more deaths. Thank you for listening." The next speaker is Darla Gordon. "As a fourteen-year resident of this valley, I am emailing my concern with the city and this county regarding the spread of COVID-19. My concern is that Temecula and Riverside County will not enforce the mandatory face covering order from Governor Newsom. The increase in numbers in our valley is on the rise, and if we do not require the face coverings and take precautions, we will continue to see those numbers increase. Our county sheriff, Bianco, has made public statements saying he will not enforce the order. This is problematic. His job is to protect and serve, yet he is refusing to protect the very constituents that elected him. As a voting, tax-paying citizen, I am asking that you enforce and urge all citizens to follow health and safety orders to keep us all as safe as possible during this time." Okay, so, the next several speakers have sent in a form email with only reference to their name and residency as the difference. So, I'm going to go ahead and read the email, and then I'll mention the names along the way. The email is as follows. "Dear members of the Temecula City Council, Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, in this case Tiffany Gage of French Valley Winchester, am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilmember Zach Schwenk did send his regrets, and he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula." So, that was from Tiffany Gage of French Valley Winchester. The same message was received from Julie Gary of Temecula. The same message was received of Zoya Bryant of Temecula. The same message was received of Samantha Ingalls of Marietta. The same message was received of Vanessa Brooks of Temecula. The same message was received of Julia Candace of Temecula. The same message was received of Tim McDonald, a Temecula resident since 1989. The same message was received from Ashley Klingsmith of Temecula. The same message was received of Ursula Antonelli of Temecula. There are a few messages that are similar to that, but they have several sentences that are different, so we'll go ahead and start those at this time. The first speaker on these related messages is Kristen Alarcon. "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Kristen Alarcon of Temecula, am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. I would like to know exactly where Temecula officials stand on racism in our community. Do you support the white business owners of Old Town Temecula, whom I witnessed with guns on their laps while people peacefully advocated for equality? How do I explain that scene to my beautiful biracial children? You have been astonishingly quiet, which makes me question your leadership. Luckily, the youth of Temecula are, we hope you..." I think she meant some more words there. "We hope you will consider coming to future events. We look forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula." The next speaker is Jay Alarcon. And Jay writes, "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy forward in Temecula in a positive direction. As a participant, I was disappointed to see that there was no one from city council present at the event. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later on in the week. I am saddened that other council members did not even attempt to participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. Please remember, it is no longer acceptable to not have a stance. With elections coming up, our voted councilpersons must represent the interest of their community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula." The next speaker is Julie Schwaben. "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Julie Schwaben of Temecula, am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. Zach is always showing up and is an incredible man. I am sure he must have been ill. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We look forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula." The next speaker is Brandon Whitney. And Brandon writes, "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Brandon Whitney of Temecula, California, am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that the other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. I would like to know your plans to deal with the issues of diversity and racism in Temecula. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula." The next speaker is Risha Hines. "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Risha Hines of Temecula, am deeply disappointed to see that there was such a blatant lack of city council representation at the event last week. What kind of message does that send to the community? Does Temecula not want to be known as an inclusive community? Do you not want folks from diverse backgrounds to help propel our economy and growth? Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula. After all, you were elected to be the voice for all of us and not just a subset of our population. Please stand up for your good conscience and help make Temecula the paradise we wish it to be." The next speaker is Melissa Bao. "Last Wednesday evening, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. The night was full of stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by law enforcement, and a discussion of how we can come together to push forward diversity, awareness, and acceptance within our town. I, Melissa Bao of Temecula, was underwhelmed by the representation of the city council at this event. Councilperson Zach Schwenk was the only member willing to attend and did send his regrets when he fell ill. I commend him for viewing the livestream and meeting with the members of the community on his own time. I am saddened that other city council members made zero effort to be a part of the wonderful night of listening, sharing, and growing. I've lived in the area since 1994. I will be raising my children here as my husband is a local business owner. I cannot stand by and let this slide while also trying to set an example of love and acceptance for my daughter. We, as a community, need to be future-ready, and that future includes equality for all and a love for every neighbor. I know Temecula wants to be a part of something great, wants to be a city where everyone feels supported and welcome, and that starts with you, councilmembers. My hope is for your participation and attendance at future events held by Temecula Unity, open dialogues for how we can work together, and a future for Temecula where everyone is safe and loved." P.S. Wear a mask. Loving thy neighbor also includes wearing a mask during a very real pandemic that Riverside County is failing to defeat. Please encourage everyone to wear a mask." The next speaker is Alma Gervasio. "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Alma Gervasio of Riverside, am deeply disappointed to see that there was such a blatant lack of city council representation at the event last week. What kind of message does that send to the community? Does Temecula not want to be known as an inclusive community? Do you not want folks from diverse backgrounds to help propel our economy and growth? Although I do not live in the city, I do work here, and I care about what's happening here. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. As city leaders, it is your job to listen to your community's concerns. Do not hide away from your own community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula. After all, you were elected to be the voice for all of us and not just a subset of our population. Please stand up for your good conscience and help make Temecula the paradise you wish it to be." The next speaker is Karen Garner. And Karen writes, "Last week, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I, Karen Garner of Temecula, am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilperson Zach Schwenk did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other council members did not participate in this beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. We hope you will consider coming to future events. We are looking forward to sitting down together to bring unity to Temecula. We have an amazing opportunity to make systemic change in Temecula that can work to ensure all residents feel included, safe, and valued regardless of their race, their ethnicity, religion, or lack thereof, gender identity, or orientation, or any other difference that makes them unique. I would love to see our city become purposefully inclusive in vision, action, and policy." Okay, the next speaker is Ms. Miller. "Who has stood for Temecula by recommending participation in local activities? And supported farmer's market and started #HometownHeroes? Who has stood for protecting small businesses so we can retain needed services if major systems have experienced a shutdown? Who has stood for Temecula by voting against projects that would endanger native wildlife corridors? Locally-elected official Stu Stewart, who hasn't solicited more work as project managers for developers paving over the earth? Stu Stewart works for your everyday needs such as keeping the schools open, the roads safe, the water from geyser leaks, the parks manicured, the Boys and Girls Club funded. Stop endangering Temecula by voting for people who vote for more buildings. Temecula is not a small town. If you add the 100,000 cars and trucks that pass the city hall every day to the 150,000 that live here, that is 250,000 people in this town, and another 25,000 for entertainment, we are talking almost as large as Corona with hotels, Pachanga Resorts, visiting events, entrepreneurings, hiking, etc. Temecula is a mini Las Vegas and getting worse. Who would know more about the massive negative effects of more housing than the local council people like Stu Stewart unless they live multiregional lives, developing more and more congestion with destructive constructing and not even..." experiencing day-to-day in Temecula like Mike Nigar, project manager for more destruction, or Mr. Han, more at UCSD than Temecula. This is part of reason for these new hotels is to stay closer to their development, no sense of community there. Temecula Stu, as he is named, is a serious contributor to keeping Temecula at its current overbuilt metropolitan former rural area with a few historical areas left instead of past elected officials who have actually solicited developers. Can you even im- image, I think she's saying, imagine more hotels and apartments, which is on the master plan? Mr. Stewart supports remodeling any historical venues like Vale Ranch and bringing it to the attention of schools and civic groups. However, he made a remark that has cost him his councilship. He needs to be forgiven and back in his seat. As emotions are running high and some police choices are most uncalled for and even fatal, and weapons do not forgive, we are all going to make communication indiscretions. Marietta's Mayor Alan Long had a DUI and ran into four Nighthawk cheerleaders in his truck and seriously injured one, and he was reelected. Mr. Stewart said what? That he could not recall a, that's the time. The next speaker is Anna Moreno. "I am a ten-year resident in South Temecula, and I have serious concerns regarding the leniency of face mask mandate. Although we have a low number of positive cases here in Temecula, we have lots of visitors and tourists that visit our town. Most positive cases are from the 92592 ZIP code. We currently have several popular businesses that have shut down due to an infected employee. This is a red flag, and we must do something about it. Sooner than later, we will have to close everything down again, and I certainly would not like to see that in our beautiful city. Masks must be mandatory. We are continuing to react to COVID-19. We are not ahead of this disease. We all know that masks significantly contribute to reduce rates of infection. This is the easiest way we, as a community, can contribute to the safety of our fellow residents and visitors. I wear a mask in public for the following reasons. I do not know if I have COVID-19. It is clear that people can spread the disease and not have symptoms. Two, I do not know if the person that is near me has a kid battling cancer or any underlying medical conditions, an elderly mom, dad that they care for. Number three, I want our community to thrive again, businesses to stay open, and employees to stay healthy. We all need to do our part. I know Temecula has heart, a very concerned citizen." The next speaker is Mike Mamien. "I wanted to reach out about two issues regarding our city. I have lived in Temecula for 16 years and voted in every local election. I am wondering why our police department operated by the Riverside County Sheriff is not enforcing the mandated mask-wearing policy issued by the governor. I see all around town in stores people without masks. My wife is a high risk for COVID-19, and it is a disgrace that our sheriff will not even check it or do any sort of enforcement on this policy. If my wife or any of my family gets sick, will they be willing to pay for the hospital bills? Number two, I cannot believe that after the previous mayor's comments about black people that not one council member went to last week's Temecula Unity in the Community Meeting at the Old Town Blues Club. We need the leaders of our community to engage in these conversations to make our community stronger. Thank you for your time." The next speaker is Troy Chavez. "Hello, my name is Troy Chavez, and I was raised in this town for as long as I can remember. I moved out for college, lived in Whittier near LA for six years, and then moved back here. What I have seen transpire in the last few weeks made me realize that as a city, the council should stand up against the county sheriff's department and the well-funded police union that supports almost every member of the Riverside County Board of Supervisors, including Sheriff Chad Bianco himself. We con- we contract for their services and have an option to raise concern about their methods and practices. We should not be afraid to demand reform. This county and city need more action than symbolic gestures. We should set up a committee to tackle this issue and fill it with a mix of community leaders and one or two council members. The committee should take a long, hard look at what it needs from the county sheriffs and what the future of policing will look like for the city and the county. We can be a megaphone for change, no matter how small our city is. I am willing to be a part of that committee and help coordinate if the council finds it prudent to create. Let's show the people of Temecula that we care about everyone in the community, not just the ones shielded from police brutality. Thank you." The next speaker is Amber Miumian. "My name is Amber Miumian, and I am a president of Temecula, I'm a resident of Temecula, and have been for the past 16 years. I have three major concerns right now. Number one, the lack of enforcement in regards to regulations for wearing masks. I am disappointed by the lack of consideration for our elderly and those who are at high risk, let alone all of our safety, when it comes to this pandemic. I have a cousin who is head of a USC hospital in LA and another who is head of contact tracing for California, and I will hold the city responsible financially should I be infected because of the carelessness around the reinforcement of the regulations set in place by Governor Newsom. I have contacted Riverside Sheriff as well and have heard zero response. As the parent of two black children, I am, number two, as the parent of two black children, I am saddened by the attendance at last week's Temecula Unity event. In case you were not aware, Temecula Unity hosted unity in the community at the Old Town Blues Club last week. There were many heartfelt stories shared by people of color in our community, questions answered by local law enforcement, and some great suggestions on how to move policing policy in Temecula in a positive direction. I am disappointed to see that there was a lack of city council representation at the event last week. Councilperson Zach Schwank did send his regrets that he was unable to attend, and I commend him for reaching out to some of the speakers and for taking time to listen to their concerns later in the week. I am saddened that other city council members did not participate in the beautiful night of listening, sharing, and growing better as a community. Number three, the Trump easy-up is selling merchandise on Winchester near Margarita and is not displaying a current sales permit. Why is this allowed? Are we going to allow vendors to sell random items up and down our city streets? I hope you take into consideration the importance of unity at this time. I urge you to consider the scope of the pandemic and the precautions that Temecula, and the precautions that protect Temecula citizens, enforcement of our laws in regards to sales permits, and any, and where we can conduct business, and I hope that council considers coming to future events put on by Temecula Unity." The next speaker is Jonathan Chang. "A few days ago, Governor Newsom issued an order requiring everyone to wear face masks when in public to slow the spread of COVID-19. We have not seen a decrease in reported number of cases. In fact, the number of new cases has been steadily increasing. Sheriff Chad Bianco has made it clear through his previous statements that he will not enforce these orders. How will you safeguard our community from the rising numbers of COVID-19? This is another reason why I, and so many others, want our own police department. The current head of our law enforcement agency does not hold the same values as those in our community. Additionally, we will be able to enact life-saving practices and policies to the way we enforce our own laws." The next speaker is Adam LeBoca. "I am writing because I am concerned about our city during the ongoing pandemic. I continue to see stories of places closing down because of a COVID-19 infection. The virus is obviously spreading in both our county and city. I see hospitalizations and ICU admissions on the rise as well. As a result of this, California has placed Riverside County on a watch list and issued a statewide face mask mandate. Several recent studies have shown the number-one way we can currently slow the spread of the virus and prevent future waves is if everyone were to wear a face mask. I have seen the comments suggesting the sheriff's department is failing to enforce the face mask mandate and even not wearing masks themselves. I want to ask the city council to consider how to help enforce the mandate and help protect our community from the coronavirus. I know some people are adamantly against the wearing of face masks, and I'm extremely disappointed this has become a political issue when it should be one of safety. I expect you may hear from them how bad masks are and how we need to defy the mandate. I urge you not to listen to them and to listen to the experts that say masks can and will help stop the coronavirus. I want you to know there are community members that want to see the mandate followed and enforced. Thank you for your time." The next speaker is Jenny Arango. "As you know, Riverside County COVID-19 numbers continue to rise steadily and have done so since the county rescinded the requirement to wear masks in public. A few days ago, Governor Newsom reinstated the order requiring everyone to wear face masks when in public to slow the spread of COVID-19. Riverside County Sheriff Bianco publicly asserted that he will not enforce any orders requiring cities, citizens to wear face masks. In light of this, how will you, those entrusted with keeping the citizens of Temecula safe, do so? How will you ensure that our own town is not overrun with those who choose to ignore science, those who flout the governor's orders, and those who selfishly show little regard for the safety of others? It is high time that Temecula considers enshrining its own police force so that its citizens are not subject to the whims of, although duly elected to serve and protect the people of Riverside County, a sheriff who chooses not to safeguard those very same communities. Also, please update your website as the email all council members still includes former Mayor Stewart's email address. I thank you for time and efforts. For the record, that email address is dismantled. It's, it doesn't go anywhere." The next speaker is Christopher Bout. "My name is Christopher Bout, and I am a 20-year Temecula resident, and unlike dozens of public comments, contributors at our last council meeting, I can prove it. In my professional life, I work in the energy sector and serve municipal clients and participate in organizations for civic leaders. As such, I follow several cities with whom I am working with and attend virtual council meetings throughout the inland empire regularly. I can tell you with absolute certainty, because of the tone, wording style, syntax, and structure that the flood of emotion-based, misinformed, police-hating public comments given at our last meeting was a structured concerted effort by a small focus group intent on proliferating a false ideological narrative designed to disrupt and ultimately destroy our current social constructs. That same group, with the same message, with the same letters, also flooded Hemet, Ontario, Riverside, Anaheim, Escondido, Menifee, and others. Please let your rationale, mature, level-headed conscience prevail and to give these leftist hate mobs zero credibility and space in your collective psyches. They are the loudest because they are the fringe, so they must scream to be heard. The, the remaining 99% of the population who just want to work hard for their families love America and for all she stands for, who respect law enforcement and do not condemn the entire industry by the actions of a few. Those people were not screaming for some twisted reform. Those people are the majority, and those good, law-abiding people are the interests that you should have in mind, not the interest of the outraged hate mobs who threaten to wreak havoc over Stu's speech-to-text mistake and who are currently seeking to destroy American cities, our country, our history, so they can transform America into some discrepate socialist utopia where every day is the summer of love. I ask you, I ask that you take Aaron Adams' invocation to heart and pray for divine guidance as you select Stu's replacement. Thank you." The next speaker is Tammy Sims. "I am a 32-year resident of Temecula, and I have serious concerns regarding the leniency of face mask mandate. A few days ago, Governor Newsom issued an order requiring everyone to wear face masks when in public to slow the spread of COVID-19. I have not seen an increase of local temeculans conforming. In fact, several have made it clear that they will not comply. Seeing a statement from our Riverside Sheriff's Department even undermining the rule of law from the governor stating while on duty they will not wear masks is so infuriating. I'm sorry, but when those expected to protect and serve do not comply to wear a mask, we need to change and get our own police force. How is it that even, how is that even possible? We have not seen a decrease in reported number of cases. In fact, the number of new cases has been steadily increasing. Sheriff Chad Bianco has made it clear through his previous statements he will not enforce these orders. How will you safeguard our community from the rising numbers of COVID-19? I know some people are adamantly against the wearing of face masks, and I'm extremely disappointed this has become a political issue when it should be one of science and safety. We currently have several popular businesses that have shut down due to an infected employee. This is a red flag, and we must do something about it. Sooner than later, we will have to close everything down again, and I certainly would not like to see that in our beautiful city. We all know that masks significantly contribute to reducing rates of infection. This is the easiest way we, as a community, can contribute to the safety of our fellow residents and visitors. Masks must be mandatory. We are continuing to react to COVID-19. We are not ahead of this disease. As councilmembers, you are here to serve our community. I urge you to make masks mandatory for the safety of our community. This is what you were elected to do. Thank you." And the last comment on non-agenda items is from Martha Howard. "I'd like to remind you of the responsibility we entrusted you to protect everyone regardless of your personal political alliance. I'm extremely concerned at the lack of enforcement the city has toward businesses that allow full capacity and without a mask, specifically the bars and restaurants in Old Town. Please, I urge you to take a strong stand on the matter. Respectfully, Martha Howard." Madam Mayor, Potem, that is the conclusion of public comments on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who took the time virtually to send in your public comments. I don't know how much longer we'll have to do this. We'll just have to pay attention to Sacramento and C. So, we want to stay in compliance with the laws. So, we have come to city council reports, reports by members of the city council on matters not on the agenda will be made at this time. A total not to exceed 10 minutes will be devoted to these reports. Does anyone wish to report? Yes, yes, yes. Did you request? I'm trying to look at my screen. Okay, go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. I'll just make it really quick. I just really wanted to reiterate that. Hearing these public comments in this setting is, is, is empowering, really, when you, you get to listen to these comments. So, I just really want the community to know that we are listening, and we see, we hear you, we're paying attention, we're, the dialogues are happening in our driveways, in our alleyways, in our parks, and I just want everyone to know out there that we are listening. Can we just wear a mask right now? 631 new cases today in Riverside County. I'm gonna wear a mask when we go out, so I'd like to encourage you all to do the same. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to add, I heard several people comment in their, in their public comments that the city council was not adhering to that, or that we were dismissing the issue and the seriousness of wearing a mask. And I, I wear a mask every, anytime I leave the house. I don't drive by myself with a mask on, and we're maintaining our distance here, so I don't have a mask on right now because I want to be able to speak into the microphone. But I think probably every council member's been adhering to that, to the law or to the new mandate, so rest assured that we are wearing masks. I know I am. Okay, so we have no other city council reports. We can move on to the consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, would you like to read the disclaimer?
Yes, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item number two, approve action minutes of June 9, 2020. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, approve city treasurer's report as of April 30, 2020. And item number five, approve the Third Amendment to the lease agreement between the City of Temecula and Temecula Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau, DBA Visit Temecula Valley.
Move consent.
Okay, motion and a second. Okay, all in favor, let's cast your vote.
And Madam Mayor Potem, because we are in-
Oh, you need a verbal-
We will be doing-
Roll call vote, okay.
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
So noted.
All right, that passes. So, we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda. I'm gonna recess, recess the Temecula City Council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the Successor Agency, to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, and the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. So, go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Potem. I will call the tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we remain in this virtual setting, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigar?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
President Schwank?
And I'm here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules, and we'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have one item tonight. It is item number six, approve the action minutes of June 9, 2020.
Move approval.
We have a motion, a second, motion and a second, and would you please call the roll? Call vote.
Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigar?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Schwank?
Aye. Thank you very much. That passes. Director Hawkins, do we have a director's report this evening?
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I know Commissioner, or excuse me, Commission Chair Levine will report out on a few items a little later, but just a couple of quick reminders. To join us for our first-ever, and I actually hope last, virtual Fourth of July experience, activities for the day or week can be found on our website and range from a family-style games to a patriotic scavenger hunt. There will also be links to traditional recipes and desserts to a chart-topping patriotic playlist. So, join us on our Temecula Community Services Department Facebook, beginning at 7:00 PM for the National Anthem performance from the Mighty Untouchables, and then our virtual fireworks at 9:00 PM. So, stay strong, stay safe, Temecula, as we celebrate our Independence Day. And then finally, Mr. President, in the midst of current events, I just wanted to share two quotes that continue to inspire me and stand the test of time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Hawkins, and thank your team for everything you're doing here for our community during this time. Do we have a general manager's report?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Any board of directors' reports?
Nope.
All right, seeing that, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to Tuesday, June 23 at 5:30.
Thank you, and I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We're up to business items, and I have business item number seven. Receive update on proposed temporary expanded dining/retail program in Old Town. So, could we please have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, members of the council. Tonight, we are presenting a revisiting of the temporary expanded dining and retail program that you considered just at the last city council meeting. And that meeting was June 9. That program included limited temporary street closures of Front Street, 4th Street, and 5th Street, which has since been actually reduced, and we'll get to that in a few minutes. It allowed for the use of sidewalks and streets for outdoor dining and retail, and it also allowed for the use of private property for outdoor, expanded outdoor dining and retail. The original outreach, and admittedly, this program's genesis was out of a response to COVID in an emergency-like setting to keep businesses afloat during some hard times. So, the outreach window was seriously compressed, but it did include meeting with Old Town restaurants and business owners, a very well-attended meeting, 60 or 70 folks, communications with the OTTA staff as well as via the Chamber of Commerce, communications with Visit Temecula Valley, and two public meetings, the first being the Old Town Steering Committee meeting, which was a public meeting, which was held on May 29, and we had 14 comments on the item at that meeting. And as well, we had the city council meeting on 6/9 where you approved the closure. During that first round of feedback, you know, we heard that businesses were hurting and they needed to expand. And they needed to expand not just in the street or the sidewalk, but they really needed most of that space. And they also told us that if the street was left open to vehicular traffic, the cost of the barriers to protect their customers was just too cost prohibitive. Since the council approved the program last June 9, we have received eight applications with one already operating, Swing and Cafe. They're operating on private property, but obviously not in the street, since the street is not closed yet. As I mentioned, since the June 9 meeting of the council, when the program was approved, I received, staff received, the city received considerable feedback from a number of different property owners and business owners that hadn't had their voice heard in the first round of outreach. They expressed a number of different concerns, including parking. They expressed the idea that the closure will deter visitors from coming to Old Town. There will be no ability to pick up and drop off purchases. Cars going by is essential to their free marketing. Of course, they did talk a little bit about the lack of communication that I mentioned before, and front street closure would cause circulation problems. Additionally, businesses that originally wanted to participate have changed their minds, and they admitted that. They contacted us and said they had a change of heart, not all of them, but some of them. When we first began this idea, all businesses were closed, and restaurants only had takeout, and retail wasn't operating at all. So, it is a very fluid environment. Things have changed for them, and I can imagine that the circumstances have changed that would cause some to change their mind about the program. And now, some businesses and property owners are actually calling for a cancellation or a non-implementation of the program altogether. And because of this feedback, that's why we're here again tonight. We wanted to make sure the council had a chance to hear both sides of the story and to make an appropriate decision based on all the information. So, I mentioned that we had an original street closure plan that was reduced down after receiving feedback primarily from businesses north of 4th Street. Not all, but primarily, the vast majority of folks north of 4th Street. We did a limited survey and found that there was not going to be any immediate participation in the program north of 4th Street, so we heard that, we listened, and we reduced the temporary closure down to just the orange sections of Front Street you see there, which is 2nd to 3rd, 3rd to Main, and Main to 4th, with all of the cross streets remaining open. So, it really has been reduced down to a fairly small area of Front Street, although it does close Front Street. Just as a reminder, the original road closure was set for June 14, which was just a week after the previous council meeting. That actually didn't give, we got feedback, that it just wasn't enough time for anybody to apply and get the application materials together, so we postponed it to Wednesday, June 24, which is tomorrow. And then, of course, the closure is intended to stay in place so long as there is participation, and the state has orders requiring social distancing. Again, parking was a major issue. We were looking at probably 150-plus lost parking spots in the original closure plan. With the reduced closure plan, we're down to approximately 70, which we've more than made up for with the new parking lots out in front of City Hall. And again, just to reiterate, the plan includes the ability for all city and privately-owned parking lots to be accessed via car. I mentioned this before, it's a free application, one-day turnaround process. And that actually concludes my presentation. I know that we have many comments tonight that will need to be read, and, you know, the question is, should the city continue with the proposed road closure plan, modify it, or eliminate it altogether? So, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Luke. Do we have any, anybody have any questions? Questions? So, I have a couple, Luke, and thanks for meeting with me today about this. So, we were receiving complaints or concerns from businesses north of 4th Street. They were worried about parking, being able to, people to pick up, drop, you know, drop things off, deliveries, those kinds of things. So, the complaints came before we eliminated that entire section of Old Town, and so that it will remain open? Or they came before that?
So, it was kind of, it was evolving. So, we had the city council meeting on June 9 with the full closure, the original closure plan. And then, immediately after that, I started hearing, staff started hearing concerns about pickup, drop off, all the things that we talked about north of 4th Street. And so, we reacted to that immediately, over a day or so, and made a modification amendment to the plan to reduce it down to what we have tonight, which is just the three sections of Front Street.
Okay.
It was evolving that way.
Could you do me a favor? Could you put the map back up?
I have it up if you want to show my screen.
Okay, so, my question is this. All the cross streets, you know, 6th, 5th, 4th, Main, 3rd, 2nd are all open. So, there's parking on those streets and traffic is allowed on those streets, so anybody could park, drop off, and they would have to walk, what, half a block?
Depending on where you were--
Right.
But I think it's important to just reiterate that those are open, the parking on those streets is still available, and all parking lots that are accessible off those side streets are still available.
Okay, so, really, the only thing that is changed, that is closed, is the street from 4th Street down to 2nd Street to through traffic. But the traffic that's coming from the south, or northbound traffic on Old Town Front Street, when it gets to 2nd Street, they will turn right and take Mercedes all the way up, and they could bypass all of this. And in fact, they would only have to take Mercedes up to 4th Street, correct? And then, they could come back down to Old Town Front?
No, they could just, they could do it just one block. So, turn right on 2nd Street, go up to Mercedes, and turn right back down on 3rd Street.
Yeah.
And then, Main Street, 4th Street, 5th Street, and 6th Street, all the way up, Mercedes.
Okay. So, I'd be surprised to know if they were, if the businesses still had concerns if they were north of 4th Street now that everything's open. So, does anyone else have any questions? So, Madam City Clerk, we have any public comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor Potem, we actually have about 35 comments or so.
Okay.
And since you asked the question, these comments were received starting Friday, June 19.
So, Friday, June 19, the change was made--
The change was made prior to that. So, you mean the reduction in the scope?
Yes.
The change was made prior to June 19.
Okay, so, the change was in effect, and everything north of 4th Street was, would remain open, and everything south of 2nd Street would remain open, and all the cross streets would remain open, all the way from Mercedes and then Main Street, which goes over to Pujol.
That's correct.
Okay, so, the 19th, and how did we notify business owners about the change?
Primarily through the OTTA.
Okay.
I know that they had a leadership change in the middle of all of this--
Ooh.
--which made it a little bit challenging--
Yeah.
--for communication. Julie Now is the president now, and she's doing her best to get to everyone. So, that was a primary. We worked through the Chamber of Commerce as well as Visit Temecula Valley, and I've literally been on the phone for two weeks with anybody who would pick up the phone and been trying to communicate with--
So, any business owners that contacted you with concerns, did you have any that when you told them that the street north of 4th Street would remain open, did that sway them or change their minds, or did they still have concerns?
There were some, but there are many that express that they still had concerns, even with the reduced scope.
Okay, even though their business would not be directly impacted by street closures?
Apparently, yes.
But maybe they thought it would be impacted by something else?
What they expressed to me, along with many other things, is that just closing Front Street in any way, shape, or form, they just weren't for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Okay, Madam City Clerk.
All right. So, the first speaker is Spencer, and I'm sorry, Spencer, I'm not going to say your last name right, Seizeigl. As an operator of multiple restaurants in Old Town, I urge Temecula to close down Front Street to vehicle traffic as planned. In the short term, it will allow businesses to offer a safer environment by spreading out our dining rooms even further and expanding upon outdoor seating, which is recognized as a safer environment. I understand that there are considerable logistical challenges with residential and vendor deliveries that would require thought and consideration, but the safety of our community should be our foremost priority. In many cities over the world, pedestrian neighborhoods have been tremendous for local businesses within the district and for generating tourism dollars and revenue for the city. If this could serve as a potential trial for a permanent change, it would be worthwhile to explore the opportunity. I understand there are vocal businesses locally who do not want to take advantage of the allowance, but I firmly believe if more foot traffic comes to Old Town as a whole, every business would stand to benefit regardless of whether they expand their seating. The next speaker is Robert Danko. At the last city council meeting, the plan to temporarily close Front Street and allow residents to expand city capacity, seating capacity by utilizing the sidewalk and part of the public street was presented, discussed, and ultimately approved. The plan, as shown in the diagram presented at the council meeting, was well thought out and seemed to be fair to restaurants, residents, and non-restaurant businesses. Based on the approved plan, our business has applied for the necessary ABC permit and obtained the required insurance. We have also expended thousands of dollars to purchase the patio furniture and containment barriers per our submitted plan. What has changed? A few members of the public late to the party or misconception regarding the temporary nature. This past week, I have been asked about the closure by numerous individuals, and while there were some initial negative comments, once I explained the plan was only temporary and designed to assist the struggling restaurants, I found the support overwhelmingly positive. Again, what has changed in the last few days? As a family-owned restaurant, I can attest to the fact that limiting the occupancy of our business changes the financial model we have worked with for over five years. A restaurant runs on very thin margins compared to other types of businesses. Limiting our revenue opportunity by 50% while our fixed costs remain at 100% makes a profitable business become one that is doomed to fail. We were forced to close our doors for a significant part of 2020, and upon reopening have experienced an increase in costs, lower sales, and no relief from rent, utilities, or equipment loans. I was thankful the city listened to the business owners and came up with a fair and reasonable solution. The most important fact to survival of our business and most of the other restaurants is building up our sales back to normal as quickly as possible. With the social distancing requirements in place, we need the extra space that was approved by the city. The public is willing to once again enjoy the Old Town District and wants to safely socialize. Since the March shutdown, there have been several abuses in Old Town, such as overcrowding, use of parking lots and alleys, and serving people in the streets. While this has not been widespread, it is an indication that reversing the city's approval of the plan may lead to more abuse and disobedience of the CDC guidelines. I urge the members of the city council to continue with the approval plan, approved plan, as long as the occupancy of our local businesses are restricted. Next speaker is Whitney Frederick. I am Whitney Frederick, and I own Arrow Beauty Collective. I am against the closing of the street. It will negatively affect my business. The next speaker is Vladimir Ozanovsky. Hi, please do not close Old Town Front Street. Thank you. He was from Silver Fever. The next speaker is David Lewis from Taos Territorial Traders. To whom it may concern, my name is David Lewis, and I am the owner of 28551 and 28561 Old Town Front Street, Taos Territorial Traders. I am against all closures of Old Town Front Street. It will directly impact all retail businesses, including my own business. Please vote against closing Old Town Front Street. I am not for it as a business owner. Put the money that you would use for street closure signs into better use for promoting maybe that, Old Town is open for business as usual. Thank you, David Lewis. The next speaker is Brenda Schultz with Thomas Edwards Salon. My business will be very impacted by road closures. As a seven-year tenant in the Penfold Building, which is a building the back of, the back on Front Street, the salon will greatly be impacted with the closure that was voted on June 9 with no communication to me or many of us in this building and many other businesses. To be quite honest, I am upset and very disappointed in the city council to make such a huge decision on my behalf without any notice of such meetings on May 29 because we were closed due to COVID, and the city council to have this on the agenda with no notice for our concerns and voices to be heard. This has to be the lowest form of sneakiness and betrayal by our city council. Will these businesses impacted be compensated? As a salon owner, 20% of our clientele average over 65 years of age COVID risk, and another 25% are local Temecula residents just wanting their hair done, then back home because they dislike all the traffic and people always drinking. Of course, never any parking, which is always a constant struggle. This is a struggle for our elderly and a safety issue if they cannot park up close. Yes, I would be impacted greatly without our clients. Another safety concern, the temperatures are extremely high, and asphalt is a major concern for the elderly clientele. This would not benefit to their health, safety, and my business. I know I have always had many challenges with parking because it has always congested and not enough parking structures or parking on this side of Front Street. Many parking spots were taken away to build riverbed in the back. Sometimes our clients get so frustrated, they reschedule and leave disappointed. We have been impacted by weddings not taking place as we specialize in bridal hair and makeup for over 300 brides a year and blowouts for over 3,000 clients. So, yes, we are hurting tremendously, too. Because of state board and CDC, we have to comply in the new norms, which no more than 10 people in the salon, including stylists, though a small salon is now running at maybe 35% capacity at the moment. So, I would like to know how closing Front Street helps my business and many others who have other businesses that, other than just eating and drinking. Most of us have been shut down three months with no revenue, as opposed to restaurants were open for takeouts. Some did better through the pandemic than went open by fifty percent and received the PPP to help them get through these difficult times. So now the city continues to hurt small businesses that were a phase-three without resources, parking, and no voice. I understand the need to help restaurants in our area, and I would rather you spend the efforts in lifting the ban of reopening and focusing on more parking spaces. Mayor Stu had mentioned parking structures on this end of Front Street where the beer-wine farmers market now and again, another change unbeknownst to us. I did watch the meeting on YouTube as Luke Watson City Management straight left out of any other businesses are going to be affected. As you mentioned that you tossed this idea around in three weeks, and yes, without hearing everyone's concerns, I have to say this was a very poorly thought-out plan to accommodate only the restaurant owners, and trying to execute this would be a disaster on all other businesses, not in the restaurant business. This would close down many businesses, and I hope those are not your intentions. We will be impacted severely if the road closures continue. Next speaker is Paul Bab from Cheryl's Antiques. This would have a negative impact on my business, parking, foot traffic, flow of traffic, clean streets, people drinking, cost of insurance, lack of security, loss of bike traffic. Next speaker is Lilia Ozanovskaya. We ask you to help all brick-and-mortar businesses in Old Town District revisit the above-specified decision and correct it. Road closure affects walking and driving traffic, and any limitation of visitors will affect negatively the already struggling community of local businesses. I work our Temecula location regularly, and I can tell you for certain that your decision to close will have a negative effect on all stores and businesses, which obviously will negatively affect the taxes that we bring to the city on a regular basis. Any type of construction work or road limits is a negative effect. We all felt that last year when the sidewalk was changing. The road closure will have only a deeper negative effect. We always count on the support of the city. Please note that I am just one voice of many. All the stores and many restaurants voice numerous concerns. Thank you. This is from, that was from Silver Fever. This one is from Letty Marquez from, it doesn't mention it, I think Notary and Tax Services. I'm writing to express opposition to the closing of streets in Temecula Old Town. I believe that the job of our council members is to protect all businesses and not just the few. Having a business in Temecula is expensive. Rents alone, I think she says, rents alone can take a lot from a business to be able to run if they apply for the PPP grant. Funds run out for most of them already. The city, county only offer one grant, so I invite you to please put yourself in the shoes of many of these small businesses who many have older clients and unable to walk. Why hurt these small businesses any more than they've already been impacted? It seems completely unnecessary if this is an effort to control the spread of COVID-19. The CDC has already issued information that the virus doesn't spread from surface contact. If the issue is crowds not maintaining social distancing or wearing masks, then why not police that? Set up a volunteer senior police ambassadors to do it. I pray you and everyone at the city decision-making team realize that this is not the best strategy to help small businesses thrive and survive COVID-19 after being closed for so long. The next speaker is Ed Duel. This is Ed Duel representing Five Business and owner of the Temecula Stage Stop twenty-eight-four-sixty-four Old Town Front Street. We would like Old Town Front Street to be open and would like to thank the city for their time and effort for giving Old Town ninety more parking spaces and fixing the alleys. The next speaker is Carol Rocha from Hot Inspirations. I'm writing to express opposition to the closing of the streets in Temecula Old Town. Why hurt these smaller businesses more than they've already been impacted? It seems completely unnecessary if this is an effort to control the spread of COVID-19. The CDC has already issued information that the virus does not spread from surface contact. If the issue is crowds not maintaining social distancing or wearing masks, then why not police that? Set up a volunteer senior police ambassadors committee to do it. These are difficult times for all of us. Please don't cut off our nose to spite our face. The next speaker is Leslie Kavanaugh. Hello, my name is Leslie Kavanaugh, and I am the owner of the Catwalk Boutique in Old Town Temecula. I have been at my location for ten years. I adamantly oppose any closure of Front Street to compensate for the few restaurants versus all of the small businesses in the area. Such closure would be a huge detriment and financial loss for most businesses. Parking is already very limited. Closures such as the Rod Run, the Holiday Parade, et cetera, have caused a huge loss in income as well, but I have never complained about these closures as they draw a lot of attention exposure to Temecula and are for a very limited period of time. The only compromise I can see is to close the designated blocks after small businesses close at six p.m. until midnight, and only on Fridays and Saturdays. Most businesses don't get a huge lunch or dinner crowd during the week. Thank you for your time. The next speaker is Rene Emke, speaking along with Bill and Nilsa Emke, owners of both the Gambling Cowboy Chop House and Rene's Cowgirl Cantina located on the corners of Fifth and Front in Old Town Temecula. First, we would like to thank Luke Watson for all his efforts in helping us to clear up the concerns we have had around Fifth Street with parking, deliveries, et cetera, and the proposed closure of Front Street. The original proposal of closing down the street seemed like a great idea and a way to allow businesses to expand to help increase revenue with the capacity challenges we've been facing as small businesses trying to survive. However, now that many of the restrictions have been lifted with just a drive-through Old Town, it's apparent that all the businesses seem to be getting back to speed. We think the closing of Front Street isn't as necessary as once thought. Parking is still a major issue, and getting our guests as close to their destinations should be our concern. Perhaps a compromise of every Thursday from five to ten p.m. with the farmer's market, street fair kind of atmosphere with downtown businesses sharing their wares would satisfy both sides of the issue. For the Gambling Cowboy and Rene's Cowgirl Cantina, it just doesn't seem necessary at this time for indefinite street closures, especially with the recent closings of two downtown restaurants due to COVID-19. Thank you for your consideration. The next speaker is Jackie Acosta. I am a salon owner at Heron Company by the corner of Front and Main. I feel the closure would affect my clients tremendously. It would increase the likelihood of not being able to find a parking space for my clients, which will drive them to search for another business that doesn't have parking issues. Not having adequate parking for my elderly clients is just inconsiderate. They need to park close to my location because some of them can't walk that far. I feel the street closure is only catering to restaurants with no respect to the rest of us small businesses who are still trying to recover from the shutdown. Economically, it will impact my business a lot and not in a positive way. The next speaker is Neru Sagal with Sunil Seti Real Estate. I heard you were the person to email regarding the road closure in Old Town Front Street. I am writing to that this is not a good idea since there are a lot of other businesses in Old Town and not just the restaurants that are hurting and shutting down. The Main Street is going to be hurting those businesses also. As it is, parking is tough in Old Town. By shutting down the roads, a lot of people are going to stop coming. I go into Old Town to pick up things and food, and will try to avoid that area if I have to walk three to four blocks to pick up the food or make deliveries. Even elderly people will stop going as it is too far to walk. Please reconsider this as it is not feasible for everyone. The next speaker is Sylvia Paulson. I am Sylvia Paulson, the owner of Gardner's Cottage on Front Street since 2012. I have seen the effect of street closures on our daily sales numbers throughout the years. The impact is always negative. In spite of this, I have never expressed opposition to activities that build community spirit and bring traffic to town. This is different. The proposal that a few restaurants can expand their access into the street, causing blockage for everyone else, is unfair to the majority of the businesses on the street. We all rely on abundant parking and free flow of traffic throughout Old Town for the survival of our stores. In the past two years, between the recent laying of updated sidewalks, installation of new sewer lines, widening of the flood control, and nearby large construction projects, all good but lengthy improvements, we have experienced innumerable interruptions to traffic across and parking for our customers. To the significant hardship of our bottom line, COVID-19 shutdowns and restrictions have, of course, added many further burdens to our family businesses. We need solutions that benefit all of Old Town. I am adamantly opposed to any activity that would block street access for the benefit of the few and the detriment to everybody else. The next speaker is Brenda Schultz. Actually, Ms. Schultz's comments have already been read. Just to make sure, we'll go ahead and read them again. We'll add the five minutes. As a seven-year tenant in the Penfold Building, which is a building in the back of Front Street, the salon will greatly be impacted with the closure that was voted on June ninth with no communication to me or many of us in this building and many other businesses. Actually, I'm pretty confident that this has already been read, so I'll go and skip this and move on to the next one. The next speaker is Michael Frevel. This needs to be reconsidered. My business, Old Town Antique Fair, is not going to benefit one bit from this. My older customer base will not hike down from the parking garage to my business, which they have already informed me. Maybe consider closing a side street or do some kind of study on this matter. Try including the other merchants, not just a couple of restaurants. My business has been here since nineteen eighty-seven, and it has and still is a draw for this town. Next speaker is Ken Rowton. Hi, this is Ken Rowton from the Swingin' Cafe. I have been operating on this corner for forty-five years and can unequivocally tell you that closing Front Street is a bad idea. We, as merchants, have been through enough in the past three months, and most of us are just now getting back the business we lost due to COVID-19. The time for an experimental new Old Town is not right now. We have had a hundred percent of our customers express they will do business elsewhere if the road closes. Just as we have gotten them back, the decision of the council is threatening to take them away. The logistics alone warrant this idea to be scrapped. A forty-foot tractor-trailer in Old Town on Third Street delivering food to us or another restaurant, how does he turn around and get out? These are the issues we would face daily, and if we would have been properly notified of this idea, the city council could have saved a tremendous amount of time and money if you would have taken the time to listen to the merchants. The next speaker is Richard Lay. We wanted to share our continued support of the city's plan to close part of Front Street to allow for expanded retail and restaurants on the sidewalks and parking spaces. A vast majority of the negative feedback has been north of Fourth Street. The city has addressed that feedback by shortening the closure to south of Fourth Street. The access to their parking lots and street parking will no longer be impacted. Claims that parking will be negatively affected is not accurate. The city has added more spaces than will be removed by the closure. Claims that the closure will decrease social distancing is also inaccurate. The closure creates more space for walking and more space for businesses, which encourages social distancing. Please note that the OTTA does not represent the whole of Old Town. In fact, they do not represent some of the largest employers in Old Town. Also, keep in mind that some of their members are also in favor of the closure. Most importantly, the decision to allow businesses to expand directly affects our ability to generate sales and in turn keep valuable staff. The street expansion allows for a win-win situation. Restaurants and retail will have the ability to social distance and have enough space for customers to get close to pre-COVID sales. In regards to nineteen oh nine specifically, the expansion gets us close to the seating we once had. It will be impossible to keep our entire staff if we are stuck at fifty percent capacity. Some of the feedback that we have heard is that business is fine since reopening. Many of these businesses have not been affected because they are not following the state's guidelines. Please give the businesses and their employees a chance to do the right thing and stay in business. Please keep in mind that there is support for the program in the form of applicants, and many shared their support during the last public hearing. I hope their voice is not lost this week. I also believe that many will join us on the street when the existing applicants prove that it is a worthwhile investment. It is universally understood that this is a temporary expansion. Nobody, including myself, can say that this will be perfect for Old Town or not. This is not a new idea. It has been proven in countless cities worldwide. But let's give it a chance and see if it is great. There couldn't be a more appropriate time to try out this concept. I urge the council to consider all the facts before making a decision to cancel the project. Many businesses have already invested much time and money into preparing for the expansion. I have seen many of the plans of the applicants and can honestly say that they are well thought out and well-designed. I believe it will be a great draw to Old Town. And that was Ricky Lay with nineteen oh nine. My name is Michael Lisa Kavanaugh. I own Main Street Salon on Main Street. I am against the road closure of Front Street. I have already lost patrons due to the article published about the street closures. My clients have stated that parking is already difficult enough and will be finding a salon elsewhere so they don't have to deal with the new road closures. I urge you to vote against the street closure to help Old Town businesses and not just a few restaurants, especially seeing how nineteen oh nine already had to close down again due to a positive COVID test. Next is Michelle Marcucci. I am aware of the decision to close Old Town in some areas to help restaurants and vendors rebuild businesses. My concern is what happens to the other businesses that are not on that end of town. As you know, parking is at a premium. The employees on Fifth Street all already have difficulty parking to get to work on time and to assist our clientele. Will there be any parking assigned for Fifth Street businesses? We have restaurants, retail, antique stores, hair salons, candy stores, cheese shop, cupcake store, and more, myself included. We all would have appreciated more time and information before this decision was made for all of us. We all hope we are considered in your final decision. The next is Christina Reynolds Hamilton from Mad Madelins. I am writing this on behalf of Sidney Hamilton. Sid owns Mad Madelins Grill. He is against the closing of the street because it will negatively affect his business. Please let us know if there are any updates on this issue. Thank you. The next is Jerry at Thomas Kincaid. It's a little lengthy, so I'll start the timer. Here is the timeline of events. Six thirteen Saturday, I emailed city council and other elected officials regarding the street closures when it was publicized in My Valley News. Six fifteen Monday, businesses were then told on Monday, June sixteenth, the street closure has been canceled, which I emailed for confirmation and was told by Luke Watson was incorrect. It was simply delayed until Wednesday, June twenty-fourth. Six sixteen Tuesday, I emailed again regarding parking constraints, delivery issues, and the previous closures due to sidewalks being replaced, protesters, and COVID closures and quarantines. Six seventeen Wednesday, an article came out in My Valley News publicizing the plan, meeting with Luke Watson, twenty-plus business owners at Mad Madelins, where he told us city council had voted for the street closure and it was a done deal. I called and left messages for Zach and Mary Ann and additional emails. No response. I emailed specifically asking for the list of sixty to seventy restaurant owners at the private meeting where they voted for close the street, mentioned in the city council meeting on six-nine. No response or list of those owners. I brought up that at the six-nine meeting, they only read four comments that were read in support of closing the street. Two were from former Chamber of Commerce members. One was a business owner whose business is not in Old Town, and the other was from a city resident. None were from actual Old Town business owners. Received a response from Mike Nagara saying the council had done their outreach, made their decision, and he said, "You email everyone on the council. It is hard for them to respond." Six eighteen, response from Zach, "They are taking our concerns seriously." I responded, "This matter was urgent and could not wait to be corrected," since they kept publicizing the plan of the street closures on the PE, My Valley News, and Temecula Patch. Six twenty-two Monday, small businesses received notice from OTTA on Monday, six-twenty-two, that we needed to submit our comments individually to the city council by six-twenty-three Tuesday for the meeting, despite us already sending multiple emails as a group. The email address they provided to us was incorrect. Multiple business owners received bounce-back emails that their email was undeliverable. What about this plan, does city council feel was handled correctly? This initiative supposedly came from a private meeting of sixty to seventy restaurant owners. We have asked for the names of those owners in attendance and have yet to receive them. They supposedly voted based on those sixty to seventy restaurant owners, but they feel ignoring emails from twenty-plus small business owners in Old Town was appropriate. Despite ten days of emails, we were given twenty-four hours to voice our concerns and incorrect email address to submit to. My concern stated in all original emails I sent, the original plan was not publicized as it should have been. Business owners in Old Town were not consulted. This plan is a very narrow, shortsighted view when you consider how many restaurants one visitor can patronize. Any visitor at max visits two restaurants. Most diners come specifically for dinner after the wineries close, and all the retail shops are closed for the day. No other city or shopping districts has closed their streets indefinitely with no end date. There is no There is no precedence or justification for this. By closing the street to allow people to take over the street, it will become a swap meet environment with open containers. That does not appeal to the Old Town customers that we currently service. You cannot close Front Street for parking or through traffic. We just got over the city closing the sidewalk to remove the wood plank sidewalks, which also reduce parking, protesters marching down Front Street, which forces to close early due to the curfew, and that is in addition to being closed for the COVID quarantine. The solution here is not to further restrict access to Front Street, when all we have been dealing with is Front Street restrictions. Closing the streets to parking will make pickup of purchases and deliveries from UPS and FedEx impossible, and a lack of parking will discourage people and make them go elsewhere. The plan does not replace all lost spaces. The current plan of closing three blocks is a loss of approximately 75 parking spaces. The message from the city needs to be, "Old Town is open. There is parking. Come visit." And that was from Thomas Kincaid at Old Town. The next speaker is Rebecca Walton from Texas Lills. "I am completely against closing Old Town Front Street. My customers are older, many 50 and up, or with younger children, plus I have many staff that cannot find parking now. Deliveries are already a nightmare. I see no benefit to street closure. We are able to practice social distancing with no problem, seating guests six feet apart, and waitlisting them as necessary. All staff where masks and temperatures are checked." The next speaker is Megan McIntyre from Under the Willow. "It has been brought to my attention that there could potentially be a delay or cancellation in the Old Town Front Street project, and I just wanted to share my opinion on the matter. I am a fairly new business in Old Town, Under the Willow, where we just hit our one-year mark in May, but have multiple businesses in Carlsbad Village. We are following every single practice set forth by CDC, as well as every retail best practice we have researched during this unique time. It has been challenging to keep things afloat, but I'm doing everything in my power to stay positive and make sure we are adapting to anything and everything that has been thrown at us. We have removed fixtures, added sanitizing stations, and spread out everything in the stores so that social distancing is 100% compliant. When I heard about the expansion, I immediately planned out next steps with my contractor to ensure we have a beautiful addition to the front that does not reflect a temporary addition due to the high standards and visual excellence. We have purchased the supplies and scheduled the addition to take place this Friday and Saturday so that we can open the expansion to the public on Sunday. We have been sharing this info with all of our customers, and everyone is thrilled to see the new curated space. My employee schedule for next week allows me to add three to four shifts each day, five to six on weekends for the additional space, which will make a huge difference in my staff's ability to receive their regular hours pre-COVID. I would ask you to reconsider this delay and cancellation and allow us to give this a try while social distancing is still so important in our everyday business. It would be a huge blessing to those of us who have closely followed the rules and kept maximum capacity at huge priority during this time. Thank you for your consideration, and please feel free to reach out if you have any further questions." The next speaker is Chris O'Neill with Old Town Temecula House of Jerky. "In advance of tonight's upcoming meeting, I would like to get my opinion on the record regarding my support for the street closure and Old Town restaurant and retail expansion. While Old Town itself is already a viable tourist destination, it is much less desirable to tourists and locals alike when dining establishments are either closed or limited in capacity. I have been, I have seen firsthand the dip in business when one or two popular restaurants are closed in Old Town. While it is difficult to gauge exact numbers and causation factors during a pandemic, I can attest to at least a 10% reduction in business when popular restaurants are not open or operating with limitations. Two weeks before Father's Day have historically been two of our busiest weeks at Temecula House of Jerky. This year, our numbers were actually on par with last year until 1909, and Luke's had to close down due to COVID-19 protocols. Based on the previous week and last year's numbers, that cost us a 20% reduction in business as people were not traveling to Old Town to eat. This also meant less foot traffic as diners typically visit the many local retail establishment while waiting for a table or deciding where to eat. While many retail owners may not see dining establishments and as an important factor in their businesses, I truly believe many of these businesses would be in dire straits if it wasn't for the traffic these restaurants generate in Old Town. It is with this understanding that I support any ideas or initiatives to help our local restaurants at this time. Allowing them to increase their outdoor dining capacity is not only good for business as a whole in Old Town, it is also many times safer for our population during this pandemic. I have spoken with many business owners in Little Italy San Diego about their recent alfresca dining weekend, and they got nothing but positive reviews from their customers. It was seen as something new and exciting to their customers while also allowing these businesses to increase sales in their effort to stay afloat during this difficult time. Old Town Temecula House of Jerky would welcome the street closure as it would decrease the multiple speeding cars and motorcycles that use Old Town Front Street as a bypass for traffic on the 15 freeway. This increased vehicular traffic does not help my business. It most likely hurts hurts it. The increased number of parking spaces will be a huge positive, as will the increased area for customers to walk, shop, and dine in areas where Old Town Front Street is closed. In terms of size, my store is probably the smallest in all of Old Town Temecula. While we have been in our location since 1995, our sales have suffered due to the need to socially distance. While normally we could pack our store with customers and welcome the additional business, we can now only allow one family or group into the store at a time to ensure, to ensure social distancing. While some customers will wait outside until the group in front of them finishes their purchase and leaves, many will simply walk away. This is a huge detriment on busy weekends, which allowing the expansion of retail onto the street will drastically help. With this plan, we can now sell outside and inside a COVID-compliant manner that keeps our customers and employees safe while not adversely affecting sales. I see nothing but positives for this plan and support it. I know many other business owners who think it is a good idea that could increase business. I am positive it will, as it has in many other cities across the country. Thank you." The next speaker is Mike and Nicole Kelleher. "We don't agree with shutting down the streets to add restaurant tables. They are with Olive Dippity. We feel it is hard enough for visitors to find parking, and it will look like we are under construction, not to mention the delivery trucks that already block off streets and have a hard time getting through. I was told by Luke that we would have to have the trucks deliver in the AM and that it would not be a problem, but that is a problem. Delivery trucks give you a window. For instance, I do request AM deliveries, but my window is 9 to 11. Yesterday, my truck showed up at 1:00 PM. I realize my building is not in direct effect of this, but it is going to work against other business. Perhaps, perhaps if the streets were blocked off around 5:00 to 6:00 PM, then it would assist the restaurants and not affect other retailers as much. We also don't feel it's good enough to close down this much when only a few restaurants are participating. It will be an open space for people to gather and hang out instead of social distancing, shopping, and eating. Regardless of the time of blocking off the streets, you would be taking away handicap parking and making it extremely hard for customers to be dropped off at a location and for customers to pick up large or heavy purchases, when after retail hours, it makes more of a win-win. Thank you for your time." The next speaker is Jillian from Reality Rally. "For several years, as Old Town has gotten busier and noisier, many have thought closing an area of Front Street to traffic and making it pedestrian-only would be a great idea. Temecula now has an opportunity and reason to do so, and what a perfect trial period to benefit many and to see how valuable it could be in the future. Cities across the country are closing downtown streets for alfresca dining. There are endless articles when Googled. At the end of my comments, there are 13 links, a few I had time to find not to be read, but to show that this is happening all over the country. Benefits, increased patronage, increased patronage to restaurants with COVID-spread safer dining opportunities. It could be a draw for tourism if Temecula leads the way with pedestrian Old Town alfresca dining. Traffic safety and noise is a big drawback and would improve so people in general and with children and strollers more likely to frequent outdoor dining establishments now and in the future. Long-term, this pedestrian area could be a beautiful center point like many other cities. I am sure the city task force leading this plan has given consideration to all possible drawbacks to make accommodations and will do so as others may arise. Adequate signage, parking concerns, need for shade, access for residents, alcohol licensing. Interestingly, the very popular alfresca dining in Europe was introduced due to the Spanish Flu of 1918." Thank you, Jillian. This is from Andrew Dotty at Old Town Blues Club. "It is my understanding that there is potentially a movement to reverse the decision to close off Old Town streets as per the current revised plan. I am not sure what made the city rethink their decision, but I am adamantly opposed to the reversal and fully believe with all my business instincts that this will be a great, this will be great for Old Town and the business community. I am aware that there has been some pushback from some of the Old Town businesses and even the OTTA, mostly between Fifth and Sixth Street. Yet you address their concerns by revising the plan, which is now the right plan. There are many of us who support the effort and current plan. Temecula is a tourist destination. It is who we are now. By doing this will only reinforce our commitment to being one of the top draws in SoCal. Just today in New York City, restaurants are allowed to open for the first time for outdoor seating. Guess what? They are doing the same thing that the city is offering in Old Town, expanding the footprints of restaurants to allow social distancing and more capacity. The owners there are so excited and appreciative in New York City. Closer to home, Carlsbad has been doing it for a couple of months now, and to great success. LA is still closed. Where do you think those folks are going to go for some relaxing entertainment? I have already seen a great influx at my business from people from LA and other areas. Leaders of Temecula, we will not get another opportunity to at least try this. No one knows for certain if this will be successful or not, but there is zero chance of ever finding out if we don't do this now. We have the Fourth of July weekend around the corner with no parade and no fireworks show. Let's give the people something special to participate in. If you build it, they will come. Once the word is out, they will come from all over SoCal during the cool of the evenings to enjoy Old Town Temecula. Most every restaurant, bar, and retail business will benefit immensely. You've done a great job with the additional parking. Revising the plan from Fourth to Second was and is the right move. From Fourth to Main Street, you have almost unanimous business owner support for doing this. Do it. Trust your instincts. Trust those business owners that actually have the largest stakes in Old Town, the ones that really invest in Old Town." The next speaker is Sean Smoot. "This message is from Sean at Cheesecake Shop. I understand you need an email from me stating that I strongly disagree with the road closures in Old Town, so this is it. I think that every day is extreme and highly necessary. The whole idea is objectionable on so many points. In fact, the businesses that were not involved in the making of this decision may be discriminated against. Please confirm that this is what you needed for the council meeting tomorrow. Thank you." The next speaker is Millid Gendy from Old Town Sweet Shop. "Hi, I am Millid Gendy from Old Town Sweet Shop, and I am against the close, the closure of the road. It will affect my business." The next speaker is Steve Lewis from Family Legal Centers. "My name is Steve Lewis, and I'm the owner of Family Legal Centers in the Gambling Cowboy Building located at 42072 Fifth Street. I know you collectively think that the current street closure could help the Old Town business community, but I firmly believe along with the numerous other business owners that your decision does not represent the majority of owners and could prove to be the straw that broke the camel's back, especially during this COVID-19 recovery period. Now is not the time to disproportionately experiment with our livelihoods. You have no right without doing the proper research to include having more public hearings to make such decisions that could adversely affect so many, respectfully, Steve." This is from Peter Ricombo of CoinOp. "My name is Peter Ricbono, and I am the owner and operator of CoinOp Game Room located on Fourth and Front Street. We as a company are against a street closure as we believe it would negatively affect our business. Please delay any closures until this can be voted upon by local business owners." The next speaker is John Kelleher. "Since Visit Temecula Valley was founded, its board members have discussed with enthusiasm and hope the possibility of a pedestrian zone in Old Town. Great destinations throughout the world have thriving pedestrian zones that become centers of social, economic vibrancy for visitors and locals alike, but few destinations have the ideal climate of Temecula, making an outdoor pedestrian zone an almost year-round attraction. There are many hurdles to consider, but at this unprecedented moment, there are compelling reasons to push past these hurdles to provide opportunities to business owners who have been shut down by government decree and who now are opened but are forced to operate at capacity levels that cannot sustain their businesses. Throughout the United States, eating and drinking establishments are literally moving out into the streets to expand their capacity and serve customers in a socially-distanced way. If nothing else, now is the time for a long-awaited experiment to determine if a pedestrian zone provides positives that outweigh the negatives. If pedestrian zones in other destinations are any indication, then it is likely that even the detractors will become fans once they witness the vibrancy that a pedestrian zone can provide." And the last comment is from Al Rubio. Actually, I have one more that just came in from, so second to last, Al Rubio. "I would like to encourage the city to preserve with your plans to help Old Town businesses create opportunities to, I'm sorry, to persevere with your plans to help Old Town businesses create opportunities and embrace creative innovations while following county guidelines regarding physical distancing and sanitizing. I would ask the city to allow for more feedback from merchants so that they can construct a plan with consideration of all concerns. In addition, I would suggest the city to be more publicly, to more publicly promote its intentions to market the closure of Front Street as a summer night's activity to drive traffic to all Old Town businesses. Lastly, I encourage the city to address how it will market and promote visitation to Old Town Temecula." And the last speaker is T. Fink, Broker. "Hello, I am concerned how each establishment will be contained on the street. Is there a diagram? What will prevent a free-for-all block party with people walking around with plastic cups in their hand full with alcohol? Also, there has been a spike in positive COVID-19 cases in this community. How will social distancing and mask-wearing be enforced? Are music bands being allowed in the street? Will they be monitored for loudness?" And council members, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I have one question for you, just right up front. Al Rubio is the chairman of the Temecula Chamber. Was that from Al Rubio, Chairman of the Chamber, or was that Al Rubio from his business?
It says, "Sincerely, Al Rubio, Chairman of the Board of Chairman." It says Chairman of the Board.
So it is the Chamber.
Yeah, I think it's, it's in that capacity.
Okay, yes, all right, just to make that clear. Well, discussion? Any comments or discussion? Mike?
You know, I sat on the subcommittee with Councilmember Swank, and prior to this coming to council, we had at least a couple of meetings regarding it. And prior to us discussing it, I know that Luke and his staff, along with Aaron Adams, really looked at this before they even presented it to you and I. When we were considering it, Luke was at a meeting. Was that at Mad Madelins, Luke?
It was at the Blues Club.
The Blues Club.
But there was also one at Mad Madelins as well. The first one was at the Blues Club.
Got it. And while that meeting was going on, I had people texting me and emailing me, primarily positive, but some people, just a couple of negative, but certainly my point in bringing that up was there was no shortage of outreach at that first meeting. Approximately how many people attended?
I think it was about 60 or 70.
Okay. And when we noticed this for public hearing, certainly if a business was affected, they would have been in the distancing noticing, wouldn't they have been?
It was just a general notice.
Okay.
I'd have to check with the city clerk on that, but it was just a general notice for the city council, right? So it wasn't locational.
Okay, okay, very good. The COVID situation is extremely dynamic. And we went from, I mean, I just want to try to remember from, you know, total lockdown and nothing operational to gradually opening and everybody begging to just try to do something, and of course, it bears mentioning once again that the City Council has absolutely no authority to open up anything. We can express our desire, but that's fully in control by the governor, whether you agree with it or not. So now we wanted to get restaurants open. That was prior to the gradual reopening with social distancing, wasn't it, Luke? In other words, we made the decision and then maybe a week later, there was internal dining, but with distancing, or was that before?
Right before the June 9th meeting, restaurants were allowed to open. It was the week before, and so that was actually a full week before, but then bars were also allowed to open the Friday. Friday before the council members. So it was all right there within a few days.
And then after your outreach meeting, then it came to council, and the council, I'm guessing we had, and I'm guessing, and I don't think you're going to remember this, but we maybe had thirty, forty comments, I think, that evening. Do you remember?
No, at the Old Town Steering Committee meeting, there were fourteen comments.
Right.
They were from businesses as well as, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and groups like that.
But, but at your outreach, you had sixty or seventy. And then when the item came to the city council where we decided to do it, if I recall, we had anywhere between, I'm guessing, Councilmember Swank, you seemed to...
Well, I think I recall there was like four comments that were...
That's right.
Yeah, at that council, I mean, just specific to this, that were all supportive of it.
Only four.
Four comments that were supportive of it.
Okay, I thought, I thought there were more than that. Thanks for the correction. Okay, so I'll kind of cut to the chase where I'm at. I mean, it seems that it's evenly divided. I want to hear more from my colleagues as it relates to other businesses that are non-restaurant being affected. But my beginning, just my general place to start is, I'd like to continue with the, with it, only because we've been talking about doing this for a long time. This is a perfect opportunity to do it and see what comes out of it. If it turns out to be super-duper negative, which I don't think that's going to be the case, we can remove it as swiftly as it was implemented. But I really think this whole thing's going to be positive. But having said that, what my colleagues have to say is very important to me, so.
Who's next, Zach?
Sure, I'd like to go. Yeah, I'll just sort of follow up on that. You know, I think, you know, we were pretty solid, I feel, on outreach. Like, I feel we did. And we really, you know, threw Luke to the wolves a few meetings, and he really was out there in the community and taken, taken a lot of conversation. So I feel like we did a good job there. There were two publicly noticed meetings. Like I said, we've had comments in support of it. When I try to think about rolling this back, I, I think of the cities that are continuing to do this, right? And so, you know, Santa Barbara, Ventura, San Luis Obispo, Solvang, many cities in LA, many cities in San Diego. This is extremely popular. If you can get over that, if you could sort of decouple the, the car equals customers, right? Because that's really what we get down to, is if you take away street parking, you're going to take away customers. You know, we, we don't, we don't necessarily calculate ride share. There's all sorts of ways to get to Old Town and spend your money that don't involve driving down here and, you know, in your car. So I, so I think, you know, having this vision to really follow through on this is important because I do think that this will be extremely popular. It will, it will allow folks to stroll and wander and, and explore and find new businesses that, that they maybe didn't even know existed, right? So I think that's important. You know, I do have a question. If we were to, so Luke, does this apply to businesses outside of Old Town as well? I know we talked specifically, but does it apply to businesses outside of Old Town?
Businesses outside of Old Town can apply for a temporary use permit to use private property. So their parking lots or whatever private property, there's no program outside of Old Town to use public property.
So we should be mindful of that, that there are businesses outside of Old Town that could potentially use their, their private...
And we do have applications already from a number of restaurants outside of Old Town to use this program.
Okay, so that's, thank you, that's important to know. If we were to limit this in some way, shorter hours or certain, you know, only do it certain days, is, you know, that, I think that that, you know, it puts, puts an impact on the businesses too, right? To get that stuff out, to get all the tables and back in and out. And so I would encourage us to stay the course. I do think this is going to be a very, very positive program for the city and for businesses, and honestly, for all businesses. I think it's going to benefit all businesses.
Matt?
So, looking along the map, if you could pull that up again real quick, Luke?
Yeah, I have it on my screen. If you show my screen.
Got it.
There you go. So what we're, what we're looking at then is, you know, I was just sort of going through some of the Google Earth images and all of that, trying to remember what exactly is in front of, you know, these closures.
I did the same thing, Matt.
Right, and I'm trying to, you know, like, what, what stores are right along these frontages that are being shut down? And a lot of them are restaurants, right? There's some in between, but it was interesting because a couple of them that were impacted, like the Jerky Store, spoke out favorably, you know, on this. A lot of the, you know, negative comments came from Fourth Street further north.
Yes.
I, you know, I see, this is a decent enough compromise right now. It still provides through, you know, Second, Third, Main, you know, it still provides drive-through access. You know, the, the farthest you're going to have to walk, you know, through any of those is a half a block, right, on any given side, if you want to get from one area to another. Why, I think we need to be cognizant of the, the handful of businesses, though, that might be impacted because of curbside pickup from customers or deliveries, you know? So I mean, that, that is definitely something that we need to, you know, we need to address. And, and I feel like maybe some of that, and maybe you can speak to it already, but some of that might, you know, iron itself out as we start to figure this out. But my look at it visually was, you know, by keeping Main, Third, and Second completely open, it addresses a lot of those issues.
Yeah, so between Third and Main, you still have an alley access to, so there's, there's that access. But for, say, pickup, the restaurants along this, this area who have already applied, and there's eight now, and we know of eleven that are at least interested in applying, so there's three more, which is, is the vast majority of the restaurants along this stretch. I mean, they, they understand that that's going to impact their, their pickup. So they're making the trade-off between pickup and more seats. As far as deliveries, you have all of the cross streets open, and we've also, the barricades that will be making, you know, the, the closures are movable, and there's only, there'll only be a half block that the truck would actually have to go. So they probably won't even need to move the barriers because it's such a short distance, and the alleys are all open on each side of, of each street. So it's something that we have to work on. We've been in contact with a number of the, the delivery services, the food delivery services actually contacted us, and we talked to them about, about morning delivery, that it'll be easier to get in. But it's such a limited area that, you know, we'll be out there watching it, but it seems like it's, it's going to be something that can work out.
Well, and, and good, so I appreciate that, because I think part of, part of what I'm looking at here is, it is, there's going to be some, some circumstances now that we've narrowed the scope, you know, and, and refined this, there's going to be some circumstances that'll come up where I think we'll have to, have to worry about this. But right now, I think it's a good, it's a good start forward. And I think, you know, we all recognize those communities that have those, you know, paseos and the walkable, you know, areas and the benefits. And so it's a bit of an experiment here. We definitely don't want to impact businesses. My only other concern was, as you go further north down Front Street and to some of the side streets that we originally contemplated, have any of those businesses applied that now are excluded?
No, they haven't. We, as we were working, as this was evolving, and we, we narrowed the scope, what we had is a bunch of conversations with the folks on primarily Fifth Street, but mostly north of Fourth Street as well. And we weren't going to get any applications from anybody we talked to. So, you know, things change. There is, there's a, there's a brewery on Fourth Street that may participate. We've talked to them and let them know that that street's not going to be closed, so if they want to use, they want to use the, the street, that they'll have to have a different barricade standard...
Right.
...for their area.
Fair enough. So, so I guess, you know, bottom line, I'm, I'm more or less in favor of the revised plan here. Let's keep aware of, you know, any challenges that might arise and make sure that there are no impacts to other businesses, because that's just doing the opposite of what we're trying to accomplish. But, you know, I was, I was sort of on the side here speaking with Mr. Butler, and I, I was, I was kind of curious, like, could you, you know, how, how, how challenging would it be to open this up, you know, on and off on a daily basis, or do it just during dinner hours? And it sounded like, you know, logistically, that's going to be a bit of a challenge for us. But, you know, moving forward, if this actually becomes something that local businesses really start to embrace, and farther down the street, they start to see the value of this, we might consider, you know, piloting other types of, of closure technologies, right? So I've seen, you know, where you've got like swing gates and other things that are just a real quick and simple, they look nice, they're decorative, you know, Greg, I mean...
Yeah, i-if we get into a situation where this is something that we'd like to implement on and off, you deploy a more permanent setup. Right now, we're all temporary. Every, like Luke said, the barricades that are being deployed are water-filled, so we'll be able to handle them with a man. You fill them up with water, then they deter a vehicle. But you let the water out, we'll be able to manipulate them and move them around. As far as the, the open and close on a more frequent basis, not only would I be concerned about our staffing requirements for that, but also the restaurants, and I think somebody touched on it earlier, the need to pull all of their improvements back out of the right-of-way so that it's out of the harms way, and you, to have a vehicle pass through. I think the quality of what you're going to see, putting it out there on a little bit more semi-permanent basis, is going to be far superior to the guest experience than if it were just cones and caution tape that has to get pulled out every night.
So, and, and then that gets sort of my last one, which was just the ROI on this. So it sounds like some of the businesses are really going all out to put this in. And so I think if we're going to do this, you know, we need to be a little bit flexible with, with, you know, worrying about impacts to other businesses, but also sort of aware that if we open up that gate and, you know, these businesses invest real money in these upgrades, and then we decide to roll this back in thirty days because of whatever reason, I mean, that's a, you know, it's not a great thing to, to do, so.
Yeah, I mean, that conversation has been had with a number of the folks that have, that have applied. I mean, I think that it's a business decision that they have to make. They understand that it's a, it's a temporary closure.
Right.
That so long as that there's sufficient participation. They can't be the only ones. We have to have, you know, a, a good density of, of participation. And if the governor changes the orders, then, you know, they, they sign a license agreement that, that, that states that specifically, and it also states that the city has the, the authority to end the license agreement with a seven-day notice.
Fair enough. So I, I'd just like to see us keep an eye on this, and maybe, I mean, COVID's not going away anytime soon from what I can tell. And so it'd be nice to get a report back in, you know, a couple of weeks, thirty days, something like that, a couple of meetings out, see what the success is, maybe get a little testimonial from some of the business owners themselves, and, and, you know, and just sort of bring this back for discussion. Because if we are onto something here for, you know, sort of revisioning Old Town, and it's, you know, it might be worthy of a broader discussion once we're in more normal circumstances.
Certainly.
Is that all, Matt? Okay, I, I have a lot of the same comments, but I did my two columns, the plus and the, you know, the pros and cons, plus and minuses. So some business has, already have made large investments in furniture and fixtures. And I know this morning, we talked even about, rather than barricades, they've invested in picket fencing or things like that, okay? So what, there was one question that kept coming around, and it was, are people going to be wandering up and down the street with open containers?
Yeah.
Which is certainly something that we do not want.
Yeah, so for all restaurants, and particularly restaurants that serve alcohol, their, their seating area will have to be enclosed. And there, that's really going to be enforced by ABC. So we're requiring that there be a barrier, but also ABC will require that there's a barrier, and you cannot take your alcoholic beverage or drink alcohol outside of that beverage.
And if you do, you're risking your license, aren't you?
Yes.
Your liquor license.
The ABC license, you're also risking your, your license agreement with the city of Temecula.
Okay, and so do we have any plans to have, at least initially, to have officers walking the beat, as it, as it were, in Old Town?
That's not something specifically we've worked out with PD yet. It actually was a question I, I received at one of our meetings, so it is something I think that we should probably talk with the, with the captain about. As of right now, the regular patrols will be in place, just as they normally are.
And the regular patrols will have at, full access to Old Town Front Street from Fourth Street northward, and from, you know, Second Street, by the time you get to Second Street, you're really through Old Town.
Yeah.
And all the side streets.
One of the, the main concerns when putting this together was to maintain emergency vehicle and emergency first responder access. And that's why the center of Front, of Old Town Front Street in the closed area will still be twenty-four feet wide and fully accessible to police, fire, and everyone else.
And then, Luke, you've, you've really covered the deliveries, you know, the major food deliveries and things like that, because that's even a challenge for, in, under normal conditions...
Sure.
...in Old Town. Because property ownership sometimes includes a parking lot that also connects to an alley, and, and so it's, it's a matter of access. So are you going to be working with, obviously, you talked about the delivery companies and with the business owners, the restaurant owners, to make sure that, that we can work this out?
Yeah, so like I mentioned, we've been talking to the delivery services, we've been talking to the businesses that are, that have been actively engaged with us. We've been talking to CRNR, and they're on board with the program. We've been talking to, we talked to Edison, we talked to SoCal Gas, just about everybody we could talk to. And, and with this limited scope, I think it really, that was one of the things that I was actually going to be concerned with, we're going to have to monitor that a lot just because it was, it was kind of expansive. But with the, with the scope the way it is now, I, I honestly think that there, we're going to be able to take care of any minor inconveniences that, that arise. And frankly, we might not have any at all, just because it's so, it's such a small area.
So we added ninety parking places. Now, granted, they're at the top of, of Main Street from City Hall, but literally, that is half a block from Old Town, a block from Old Town Front Street, pretty much.
It's on the same block, that's right.
And then how many parking spaces are we losing? And really, it's, it's street parking only that we're losing, correct?
We're, we're losing approximately seventy on-street, front-street parking spaces.
Okay, so it's street parking we're losing. All parking lots still have access in Old Town.
Public and private, that's right.
Whether it's from alleyways, which some of them do connect to alleyways, as well as the side streets.
At this point, all parking lots will be available from a street, not just an alleyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. And then I, I think we covered this before, but a lot of the concerns we heard, and that you and I talked about, and Greg, we talked about in our meeting today, was from businesses that were north of Fourth Street, and we're talking about, you know, personal businesses, salons and things like that, that require, that, and it was mentioned, that they have elderly seniors that come in to get their hair done. And so there's still full access because north of Fourth Street, everything is open.
North of Fourth Street, everything is open. I, I, I do have to caveat that not all of the concerns we heard were for businesses north of Fourth Street.
But, but I did hear some, yes.
But primary, primarily north of Fourth Street. And that's why we limited the scope.
Okay. And then we've got through traffic going north, I, I say north and south, I mean, it's parallel to the freeway. So through traffic can go through using Mercedes Street, right? Or they can divert over to Pujol Street and go all the way across Pujol if they want to. Now, granted, it's not as convenient as going through Old Town Front Street, but then we have to, you know, we have to measure return, cost-benefit. And then finally, I'll say, this is like a pilot program. And if it's not working, we will, we will, we'll put it back, or we'll modify it, or we'll change it, or we'll do something. But really, what we're doing is creating that environment that's like a street festival without all the, any negative connotations that you may have of festivals like open containers. It won't be that. So it's really outdoor dining under the stars in the beautiful surroundings of Old Town, right?
That's right.
And then during the day, so, you know, you can be down there for breakfast, and I think it's going to really create a kind of a festive atmosphere. And is that what you've heard from the other cities that are doing it?
Yeah, absolutely. And don't, don't forget, it's for retail as well, so the retailers in this section have, have applied to be out there too, so it's not just restaurants.
Okay. And if you are a retailer, what will you be doing? Restaurants, obviously, are serving food and doing all that. What are the retailers doing?
They're going to be placing their merchandise out front, so out on the sidewalk, out in the street. And I think we heard from Under the Willow, which is right next to Be Good, which used to be Rosa's. So they've actually hired a contractor to do some kind of minimal construction of an extended patio...
Nice.
...to, to put their merchandise out during their business hours.
So how do we, how do we answer the concern from someone that it's just going to turn into a swap meet?
Well, only the businesses that are currently in Old Town can, are eligible for the program, so no outside businesses can come in.
And so same merchandise?
Same merchandise.
Not lots of, you know, tchotchkes coming in that you normally wouldn't purchase, or, you know, those kinds of cheap things that, right?
Right, it's only Old Town businesses.
Okay.
Mary Ann, if I may...
Sure.
There was a little bit of confusion on a few of the comments that we got. Because the program is citywide, except for the street closure component, some folks some folks were under the impression that a retailer operating in the mall could come apply for a permit and set up a shop in the street here in Old Town.
No.
No, you have to have frontage along the street in order to expand into the street along Old Town.
And then are they confined to what would be their little section of frontage? Like the width of their store or space or whatever?
That's right. Only the length of their frontage.
Okay, so nobody from any other cities bringing merchandise down to Old Town? Not even the mall, no other stores, just the ones that are located on Front Street? And then they're confined to the space immediately in front of their store and the width of what their store is or their property?
That's right.
Yes, okay. So it's a fairly defined space? And the restaurants will be the same way? They're confined to the, the space, the width of their property?
That's right.
Boy, 1909 is really going to have a lot of space. Okay, let's see, I don't think. And again, and Matt mentioned it too. And we've done this before. We will revisit, I, you know, we need, I'd like to have an update. You know, and you're, you guys are really good to, when something like this is going on, you're really good to go down to Old Town and check it out, test the environment, talk to people and see how things are going. And then it also gives you a chance to address any issues on the spot and try to take care of those. But, um, yeah, I, I'd love to get feedback. And hey, nothing precludes us from going down there to eat, to eat and, and shop like we always do. So, and I intend to do that. So Zach, you have another comment?
Yeah, if, if I may, I just have one more question for you, Luke. So you mentioned a brewery on Fourth Street that wants to participate. I believe Coin Op was opposed to this plan. But let's say Coin Op at some point wants to go, hey, this is turning out pretty well. Is, is there some plan in place to say, okay, well, we can expand it to Fourth Street, let's say? I mean, we have to come back here and maybe have that discussion, but.
I think we would have to come back to get approval for that, unless you vote on that tonight. But they would not be within the closure area. So if you would like for businesses to be able to use it outside the closure area, that's just going to be a different standard for the barrier that goes around the business as it expands out into, and it'll only be able to use the on-street parking spaces because the sidewalk through fare will still be, need to be maintained because the street is still being used by vehicles. So that's just, it'll be, it'd be a little bit different setup for them.
Okay.
But they also have, just you said Coin Op, they have frontage on Fourth Street too. So, and, and Craft Brewery, I think, is right next door. And they're, they're, you know, they're talking about doing it as well.
Right. Well, maybe there's some flexibility down the road to come back and revisit that.
Sure, especially if you revisit it. And I, I do want to get updates so that we'll know and nothing sneaks up on us or nothing, if there are issues, they don't grow and, and get larger. So I'm looking at the agenda item and it says, "Receive update on proposed temporary expanded dining slash retail program in Old Town." Okay, we've got the update. So we've received it.
Yeah, the question before the council was, do you want to continue with the program as is? Or change it or modify it? So that's what you're voting on.
I, I suggest at this point, we do not modify it because we've got, this is out in the public now. And I think some of the businesses that weren't aware when they wrote their letters of concerns might be relieved or, you know, a little bit happier knowing that we're, it's open from Fourth Street northward. All the side streets are open all the way. So I would, I would suggest that we keep it the way it is. And if there is consensus for that, I would accept a motion.
Yeah, no, I, I certainly would agree to that and maybe just add that we bring it back in 30 days and review it.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, and we need to do a roll call vote.
Mayor Portem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwain?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen and lady. So moving on to item number eight, "Consider the vacancy on the city council and provide direction regarding the same." And the recommendation is that the city council consider the vacancy resulting from the resignation of James Stewart and provide direction on whether to fill the vacancy by council appointment or election. So is, can we have a little report, please? What our options are?
Yes. Madam Mayor Portem Edwards, on June 4th, 2020, former mayor and city council member James Stewart tendered his resignation effective immediately from the city council. Government Code Section 36512 states that within 60 days of its occurrence, the city council needs to fill that vacancy by appointment or election. The 60-day deadline is August 3rd, 2020. While the position is vacated, while the vacant position is currently at-large, it is scheduled to transition to District 2 with the November 2020 election. So essentially, you have two options. You have an appointment option and you have an election option. I'll briefly go over the appointment option. In the appointment option, we would need to actually fill the vacancy by August 3rd, 2020. Your candidate pool would be citywide, open to all residents of the city of Temecula over the age of 18, continuously registered, because this still remains an at-large seat until after the election. The advertising and outreach would be consistent with how we filled the vacancy, when we filled the vacancy when council now supervisor Chuck Washington vacated his seat. We would be utilizing printed newspaper, website publications, physical posting, and social media. The application process would also be very similar. We would go ahead to what was utilized in 2015 and utilize that same application with some updates. The, the presentation and interview would also be very similar. It would need to be done publicly. So the council would conduct 10-minute rounds for each applicant consisting of a five-minute presentation to be followed by a five-minute question-answer period. And we would basically call up the, the applicants in alphabetical order to go ahead and make their presentation. Again, it would have to be duly noticed because the Brown Act does apply. The timing and the term for the appointment, if an appointment is made, that particular individual would serve for four months from the date of taking office, if we follow the timeline that was set forth in the staff report. The costs related to the appointment process are nominal. And now I'll go over option two, the election option. You actually called for a general municipal election, which included District 2, this particular seat, at the last city council meeting. So we would go ahead and continue to, to fill the vacancy in that manner through the regular election process, the general municipal election process. And until such time, the seat would remain vacant. So those are your, your two choices. If you would like to go ahead and pursue the appointment process, you would need us, you would need to give us direction to go ahead and do so. And if you would like to pursue the general election process, really no action is needed because you've already called for the general election.
Right. Okay, any questions? No, no? Comments? Suggestions?
Any public comments?
We do not have any public comments on this item.
So, Madam Mayor, my preference is we just leave the seat vacant. If by chance the council wants to appoint somebody, I don't know that it would be equitable to appoint somebody from, from that district, particularly with a, with a election coming up in short order. There's also the option, he's probably watching TV right now, if, if we felt that we needed a fifth member, which I don't think we do. I think we can wing it for the next five months. But there's always a former councilman, Jeff Comichero. Jeff, wink, wink. But, but no, in all sincerity, I think we can wing it and go with four.
Anybody?
No. I, I agree.
Yeah, no, I fully agree. I think this is something that we just let it go to the election, let the people decide.
Yeah, I agree too. So seeing, we don't, do we need to do anything?
Yes. Oh, actually, no, you do not. I'm sorry, that's option two. We're good to go. The general election will proceed, the position will remain vacant.
Okay, so thank you very much. All right, number nine, "Consider the vacancy of the position of mayor and provide direction regarding the same." And the recommendation is that the city council consider the vacancy of the position of mayor and provide direction regarding the same. Okay, so same thing. Randy?
Yes, ma'am. So on June 4th, 2020, again, former mayor and city council member James Stewart tendered his resignation effective immediately from the city council rendering the position of mayor vacant. The city does not have a formal or written policy addressing vacancies in the position of mayor or mayor pro tem. However, Temecula Municipal Code Section 2.04.07 does address presiding officers and does state that the, the mayor pro tem can be the providing officer in the absence of the mayor. So in this case, you actually have three options. And those options are, you can go ahead and appoint the mayor pro tem as mayor and select a new mayor pro tem. You can go ahead and appoint another council member as mayor. Or once again, you can leave the position of mayor vacant until a full council is seated.
Okay. Any questions?
And again, no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No?
No questions.
No? Mike, you want to take this one too?
I could, but I've been going first all of these times, so I'd like to hear my colleague.
That's because you're trying to hide behind this chair. And I'm not letting you get away with it.
No, I don't want to hog the, the going-first routine, so.
Well, and I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do it. Zach?
I'll, I'll jump in and I'll just, you know, start, start the conversation. I generally don't have a problem leaving it vacant, to be honest with you. There's, you know, a time right now where there's a lot of conversation in our community. And I think we, I think we owe it to everyone to truly be involved in, which we certainly all are. But I don't have a problem leaving it vacant. I also don't have a problem having someone serve there. I'm not, I'm not solid either way, to be honest with you.
Okay. Matt, anything?
Yeah, I, you know, my, my preference, I think, would just be to leave it vacant as well. Largely because I think it, you know, there were a number of items that were brought out at the last meeting that I think, you know, needed to be addressed as far as policy and, and some of our, you know, you know, internal bookkeeping on, on, you know, being a council member and, and, and serving the community. I know we, I'm, I'm assuming everybody else met with staff and sort of went through their to-do list of things that they'd like to see as well. Okay, so, you know, so we've all had that opportunity, but we haven't had that, you know, feedback. We haven't had any, you know, you know, additional dialogue with the community on, on some of these issues. And so absent that, I think it's a little premature for us to appoint a mayor. I'd like to get through that conversation because I have some pretty, pretty strong feelings about what that, what that means and what that representation sort of entails. And I, I fully, you know, believe that, that every one of you would and, and has been, you know, an outstanding mayor. You know, Zach, you're the only untested one, but, you know, you've got my confidence, you know. But, but I think it also sends a very important message to the community as well by leaving it vacant. And, and, you know, brings us together, I think, you know, as a more unified council, saying we're, we're, you know, the, the next six months of, of, you know, of this year, we will be, you know, doing this together, albeit, you know, spaced further apart than usual. But, but, you know, I think that's, that's an important statement for us to, to make right now.
I think it is too. And, and, you know, I'd like to reassure the residents that that, that what would have been that district or what is that district will not go neglected in any way, shape, or form. So for the past, what, 30 years, the council has served the entire city as a whole and considered the entire city and the importance of, you know, infrastructure and maintenance and improvements and public safety in the same way. And I think we'll continue to do that. And so that will protect that district as well as all the districts. So I would ask the residents not to be concerned about that. Mike?
A couple of things. Two things on my mind. What message does it send? And I'm saying this for discussion, not for affirmation or, or challenge. I, I just want to discuss it. Does it send a, a different message if we, if, if we don't replace the mayor? Does it send a negative message? Are we going to read across the United States, "Council refuses to, you know, appoint mayor"? I, I don't know, but I was, I'm a little curious about that. The second thing that is on my mind is a little more going back to last council meeting, Councilmember Ron, that you brought up. The, the times that we're in right now requires succinct, clear communication of how this council feels about things. And I think it's real important that we do develop a, a, I guess, a criteria of how we're going to communicate. And at the same time, not infringe upon anybody's right to get out there and, 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 you know, say what they feel, et cetera. That's a real fine line, but I think that just requires that right now. So in the context of those two things I brought up, is it not wise to have a main spokesperson? And that's just a conversation I want to have.
Well, I mean, I can, I think it is wise to have a main spokesperson just so that we are all on the same page and it does send that clear and succinct message. And it's not, I mean, it's not unusual for corporations, school districts, cities to have public information officer. But, you know, as the figurehead for the city, certainly the, the mayor or the appointee, whoever it might be, would be the one to represent. But I think that the message that the mayor would convey wouldn't be the mayor's message. It would be a message that designates the consensus of the entire council and the direction that the council has chosen to go. So I don't know, anybody else?
Yeah, I don't, you know, so to your point, I don't necessarily think that we're going to make the papers for not appointing a mayor. And, you know, I don't think that's a negative, to be honest with you. And, you know, as far as messaging, I, you know, I think, I think the city manager's office does a great job of messaging, right? And, and, and we're all looped in on that. And the thing that I think that's really important and Councilmember Ron, you brought it up, is just that, that moving forward, what does this look like, right? And, and again, we all had an opportunity to share what we truly, you know, feel internally with staff and what we want to see that direction go. And, and I think, I think it sends a message that we're listening to the, the community, right? Like we're listening to the, like the streets are talking. Dave Chappelle said in his latest show, and this might be the first Dave Chappelle reference I see in council meeting, but Dave Chappelle said, "The streets are talking, right? Let's listen to the streets." And I think that's important. And I think leaving it vacant doesn't send a bad message. It sends a message of unity. It sends a message that we're all together, we're all listening, we're all participating. And one person's voice isn't artificially amplified in any, in any way. That we are truly listening.
Right. And if we have any concerns, are you, I mean, specifically, Mike, are we talking about social media and those kinds of things? I mean, let's just get it out there.
Yes, 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 because right now, there are, there's a lot of lack of communication. There's a lot of fear out there. Say it again, George Floyd was murdered. I don't want anybody to get the wrong impression. There's people who say that they have a fear of the police. We are going to have to deal with those things. And you know what? There's a good message going out there regarding Black Lives Matter because Black Lives Matter right now, okay? And, and, you know, when they had the protest out there, they were very clear that all lives mattered, but right now, Black Lives Matter. And so that message has to be really gently and in unity, as you say, communicated out there for just the benefit of our city and our citizens. And that's kind of what I'm thinking. And the other side of that is that there's a, and maybe I'm saying too much, but I just want to communicate, there's just a whole other side of our community that may not understand that because they have not been engaged in like we have. And so we need to communicate with them as well. And it's all about the unity that we're talking about. I'll ask this then. If we're going to go with, with no mayor, If we're going to go with no mayor, I think we need to say why in a unifying way together. I think we need to make that unifying statement as to why we're not going to do that. And I see Councilmember Ron raising his hand.
Well, I think we've had, as long as I've been working with the city or been on the city council, the city council has, in almost every respect, operated with tremendous unity and tremendous, I think, sort of cohesiveness in, you know, being able to, you know, work through some challenging subjects. But we always, you know, and we've said this, even in our, you know, more contested meetings that we've had over the year, you know, oftentimes, we would, you know, shake hands or even hug each other in the hallway, saying, you know, "We didn't agree at the beginning, but we landed in a place where we could," right? And I think that's what this Temecula City Council is all about.
Yes.
And I think the message really, and you said it earlier, Zach, is, and you've all said that, it's a unity message, right? So, you know, I don't see that there's any problem, whether it's a press release or, you know, communications to the public or communications, however it goes. And we've done it before on very important issues where we all sign the letter, right? And so I think it's, you know, and yeah, the mayor, you know, serves as, you know, sort of a ceremonial role and a figurehead and all of that. But we also know that there's, you know, a lot of events that we do, not that we're doing a lot of events right now, but they're always attended by, you know, generally more than one of us, right? And in many cases, you know, for, you know, other celebrations and community things, we're usually always all there. So I think it's, you know, for us, from my perspective, it's a time for us to heal. It's a time for us to recalibrate. It's a time for us to show unity within our community. And it's a time for us to have, you know, to foster a more collective and inclusive conversation in our community. So I think that's the message that I would like to say, is that it's not, you know, it's not a lack of leadership, because the leadership's sitting right here. It's our ability to communicate to our constituents, to our communities, to our businesses, to our neighbors, that, you know, there is unity here in the city of Temecula, and we all are going to walk through the remainder of this year together.
I like that.
And we're going to be all-inclusive. We're going to reach out and attract people and encourage people to participate and to speak up.
So if I may, and I don't know that this requires a motion, but I'll say something to this effect, in the spirit of unity, we're going to leave the mayor's seat vacant for the remainder of the year. Is that satisfactory?
Perfect.
Yeah, is that what we need? So.
And no motion is required, as the seat is currently vacant.
Okay.
But can that be noted as to the reason?
Sure.
Okay, so.
Absolutely.
And, you know what, if a press release goes out, I don't know if we're going to do it. However it is, we'll leave that up to, I guess, staff. I'm not asking for a press release, but if people inquire, I think we agree that's the message. Yeah?
Yeah. Councilmember Nigard, you know what? Why don't you go ahead and make a motion with that statement?
Yeah.
And then we can go ahead and just include it in the minutes, which will be cemented in.
Sounds good. That's my motion, in the spirit of unity, that we're going to leave the mayor's seat open until the rest of the year.
Okay.
Or vacant.
And I second that.
Second.
Do we get one? Matt? Okay, so motion to second.
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigard?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on to number.
Madam Mayor Potem, if I could, real quick.
Great.
For clarity, press release, no press release?
Oh, I think there needs to be one.
Generally, council wants to move forward with?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know Betsy's upstairs watching. She's probably got it halfway done already.
She probably does.
You know what?
We'll put something together and obviously run it past you guys.
If we're going to be unified, let's just go out there and be unified.
Absolutely. And the paper's going to cover it anyway. They'll watch the meeting, and they'll, but we'd rather have our interpretation of what we just did, excuse me, than the newspapers.
Absolutely.
We'll take care of it, and we'll make sure everyone is satisfied with it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, number 10. Consider appointments to the 2020 City Council Committees. And you have an extensive list in front of you, so.
I do, Madam Mayor Potem Edwards. Actually, I just want to give you a brief staff report.
Okay.
Because there is an element to this review that I think it's important to be read out loud. So as you know, the city council annually appoints members of its legislative body to serve as liaisons, to city commissions, external organizations, standing committees, and ad hoc subcommittees. Each year, you typically review this at the end of the year for the upcoming calendar year, and a council member serves for an appointed calendar year. On June 9th, the city council, I'm sorry. On June 4th, 2020, former mayor and city council member James Stewart tendered his resignation from the city council, thereby vacating his appointments to the various committees. In addition, on June 9th, 2020, the city council individually provided comments under the council comments portion of the agenda regarding the peaceful protests and racial equity conversations that are taking place in our community right now. Through those comments, the city council expressed a desire for additional work and effort to be undertaken with respect to this important subject matter. It is therefore recommended that the city council not only review the committee list to make appointments to the vacated positions resulting from the resignation, but also provide direction on whether a new subcommittee is desired to work with staff in the racial equity and community engagement space, or if the consensus is that all council members would like to equally participate in this space without a subcommittee, in which case staff will proceed with the development of a comprehensive agenda item for the first meeting of July. So if we could maybe go through the list first, and you see all the places that are highlighted that we'll need to go ahead and add a different name, and then you could provide us direction in regards to the secondary subcommittee question.
Okay. So.
So Public Traffic Safety Commission.
I don't mind, I mean, I'm honored to take that one, having come from the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Good with me.
Yep, good.
Okay. City Sustainability Program Committee.
Mike?
You know what, I'm going to step up wherever I need to step up, so if you guys want me to do this, I'll do it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
E-Government and Temecula Outreach Subcommittee.
Mr. Schwank?
I'll take it.
All right.
Economic Development Subcommittee.
I'll do that if nobody wants it.
Okay.
Finance, I'm sorry, Finance Subcommittee.
I'll do that if nobody wants it.
You and I did it before.
Yeah, I know. I did it for like 18 years.
Infrastructure Beautification Subcommittee.
I think Mr. Schwank is excellent.
Mike, you were on that one, too.
Yeah.
I'm all about beautification of infrastructure.
It's a good one, and it kind of ties in with community services.
It is. And you need to be artsy for that, and I think the both of you are good at that.
Oh, thanks.
All right.
Parks Recreation and Community Services Subcommittee.
I'd like to take that one.
Okay.
Okay. Public Works Subcommittee.
Oh, I'd like that one, too.
Okay. That sounded a little ominous.
Oh, no, I'm just seeing Pat down there. I just, yep.
Animal Shelter Liaison, JPA Representative.
I did that for so many years. I guess I could pick that one up. Zach?
Yeah.
That's kind of community services, too.
You know, I love animals, and I would love to be a part of that.
And they only meet, what, once or twice a year now?
Okay, so the next two are actually just alternates, and it's pretty much for the annual conferences, at the League Annual Conference and at the National League of Cities. So I know Councilmember Ron previously is the primary because he attends. Is there any other council member that would like to?
Ms. Edwards?
Yeah, I will, because.
Well, I was going to say, I wouldn't mind doing it, actually. I was actually the alternate last year.
That's right.
Whoever wants it.
I mean, if you really wanted.
And we can still go if we're going to go to the conference.
You guys fight it out. Who wants to vote?
Who gets to stay late and vote?
So on that one, it's important for consistency for the league and the national league, so can we do the same?
Of course.
Okay. Rantacalifornia Water District, primary.
Who's got, who's got infrastructure? We got the beautification, but how about public, isn't that a public works thing?
Yeah, I'd be happy to serve that.
Okay.
Nice, Mary Ann, I like the way you slipped that over to Councilmember Ron.
Shh, 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 keep going, Randy, keep going.
Temecula Sister City Liaison.
I would love that one.
Okay. Zach, I'm so glad you're here.
RCA representative, this is for the alternate.
I'll do that.
Yeah, I love RCA.
If no one else wants it.
That's for the alternate, and Councilmember Edwards is the primary, so we're good right now. The primary on RCHCA.
I'll step up for primary if nobody else wants to, because I was on that one for years, too. And I'm on RCA, and they kind of go together.
Okay. So would then we need to backfill the alternate?
Yeah, you still need to, uh-huh.
I'll fill the backfill if no one else wants it.
They meet twice a year, three times a year, maybe.
Okay. WRCOG.
I did ARCOG before I turned it over to Stu, if somebody wants it.
Well, I will take it because ARCOG meets right after RCA, and I'm there anyway.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It's through, yeah, I'm fine.
Community Service Funding Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I'd like to get that one, please.
Okay.
And the Human Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I'm cool, well, I'm cool with it if you guys are.
Can you remind us what that is again?
Yes. So that is the, the subcommittee evaluates services and programs related to special needs, homelessness, senior citizens, mental health awareness, to identify nonprofit stakeholders to enhance and coordinate delivery of these services. They actually review funding associated with these programs for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll take that, but with a caveat to my colleagues. I have a feeling that what we begin to discuss next month regarding all what's going on may overlap into this, and I do not want it to. That's going to have to be a discussion we all have, so as long as it's focused on what it does now.
So you want, this will be carved out, have its own discussion?
Well, whatever we do, I mean, it should be as it is, but I have a feeling, like I said, we're going to be doing some things in the future that would fall under this, fall under human services, but we all need to have a saying when that occurs.
So Councilmember Nigard, what I heard you say is the race and equity conversations that we are having right now, you would like to keep those separate at this time?
You know, spoken like just a beautiful, excellent city clerk for just blurting it out. The answer is yes.
Public Safety Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Well, I'm on traffic and safety now.
Yeah, but also, yeah, okay, good.
Roarpa Ranch.
I wouldn't mind that one, actually. Yeah.
Short-Term Vacation Rentals.
Oh, give it to mine. Who wants to join me on that one?
I'm all in, let's go.
All right, let's do this.
Okay, Strategic Fiscal Planning.
I'll take that one.
It's a fun one.
Oh, I'm sure. Just the title alone.
Okay. And last but certainly not least, the Small Business Incubator.
I'll jump on that one.
Zach, you picked up like 30.
All right. So that is that direction. And now, in regards to the race and equity conversations that our community is having, your consideration for a subcommittee and/or individual participation.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead, because I was probably going to say exactly what you're going to say.
I, you know, we talked about the spirit of unity, we're not filling the mayor's seat.
Right.
You know, it's going to be very uncomfortable for a subcommittee to meet, work things out, and then come out here in public and then have a debate whether or not we agree with them or not. And I think everything we do in this regard needs to be open and transparent, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
And not only that, every one of us wants to be personally involved and have personal input, right?
Absolutely.
So subcommittee just is not going to work on this one.
Not going to work.
Correct.
So Randy, do we need to not appoint?
So in that case, what I would ask is that the city council go ahead and make a motion to include the amendments to the city council's subcommittees as already discussed and reviewed. And that we'll also note the desire on the part of the city council to not form a subcommittee on race and equity, as you each wish to be equally involved in this important conversation on an ongoing basis, and staff will be working with all of you individually for the July 14th item, as we already have been and in the future, so as to be mindful of the Brown Act considerations.
So move.
Yeah, second.
Very good. Okay, you may have a roll call, please.
Mayor Potem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigard?
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And I have to say, I think this is the fastest we've ever done, the committee appointments.
Yep.
Really good. Okay, so we move on to departmental reports. Community development, anything? No?
Those are receiving files.
Correct. Okay. Number 12 is fire department.
Nothing to receive and file.
Actually, we're next on to commission reports.
Lee, I wanted to read them all. Police Department, Public Works Department. Okay, now we're on to commission reports.
There we go.
So commissioners?
Community Services is first.
Thanks for staying.
Community Services is here. Good evening, Mayor Potem and city council members and staff. A couple of brief notes. Our summer concert series continues on Thursdays. Last week, we saw the Country Club Band with over 400 views. And this Thursday, we have the 80s All-Stars. We also have ballfields and hockey rinks open for our organized youth camps. Our volleyball and basketball courts are open on a first-come, first-served basis. And today, the Temecula Valley Museum reopened. It will be open Tuesday through Sunday, 10 to 4:00. And we all want to get down and see the new art of the Aloha Shirt, Keone of Hawaii, 1938 to 1951.
Nice.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have the cleaning crew coming in now to wipe down the lectern, as is required. Huh? Yeah, Director of Public Health, I believe.
Thank you, Pat Thomas, Director of Public Works.
And health.
And health. Next, we have planning.
Lanay, good evening. Ooh!
Ow!
Just don't, don't breathe.
Okay. So at our last planning commission meeting, we approved a new assisted-living community, a 494 unit, and the name of that is Lantern Crest, and that's at the southeast corner of Date Street, Annienez. So we're excited about that, and I think it's much needed in this community. So that is what we did at our last meeting, and so thank you.
Thank you. You might want to go a little bit lighter on the alcohol sprayed this time. I can smell it clear up here.
Our next meeting is this coming Thursday, 6 o'clock. We're meeting by phone and electronically. We'll be looking at staff recommendations on traffic controls for four intersections in the Alta Vista neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, public safety. Take a deep breath before you get up here.
Good evening, Mayor Potem.
Good evening.
City Council and ZECO staff. Captain Hall is on vacation sharing tonight, so I'm filling in for him. For the month of May, there's 6,000, approximately 6,000 file numbers generated during May. This number includes calls for service, deputy-initiated files, as well as traffic citations. For the traffic stats, there's 855 citations, 17 DUIRS, 41 traffic accidents. Under Special Teams, which is POP, SET, HOT, and BST, we had 16 felony arrests that were on-site, two felony arrests warrants served, 17 misdemeanor arrests that were on-site, as well as three misdemeanor arrests warrants served. For the Investigations Bureau, we received 25 new cases, 22 were closed. For the Promenade Mall, there was 90 calls for service, resulting in one misdemeanor arrest and filing. And due to COVID, there were zero volunteer statistics or hours served. On a different note, it was asked for us to provide some information, some insight into where our deputies that provide service to the city of Temecula live. And we looked into the numbers, and we came up that there's approximately 43% of our station's staff live within the jurisdictional boundaries of our station. So the majority of the remaining percentage actually lives just outside of our jurisdictional boundaries, obviously within the city of, oh, I'm sorry, in the county of Riverside. To add some value to that, the common knowledge at our station is that a vast majority of us actually spend our off-duty time here in the city of Temecula and the surrounding area. I can personally attest to that. I've raised my family out here since 1997. Out of 25 years of service in the department, I finally, last year, was able to come to year, was able to come to the station. Also, common knowledge is that most of the people, most of our, our station's staff, well, let's put it this way, they love serving the city. They love serving our community here. They take great pride and honor in what they do here, being a small percentage of the public safety that we provide here. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that were posed to us last week. With that, I'll close my report unless there's any questions.
No, but the, the answer is a huge majority of public safety officers and, and personnel, fire personnel, live here. Whether they work in Temecula stations or not, they choose to live here, even if they work in other stations in other cities.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. City manager, anything?
Just to add on to what Lieutenant Novak said, we had a meeting with him and Captain Hall before he left on vacation. And one of the other interesting facts that they shared with us was the transfer list, if you will, those that want to work here, that aren't assigned here yet, is 60 to 80 people long.
Wow.
To, to come to work here. Very desirous place to come to work. So that, that's something to be said about the quality of life and the quality of service that's here. And then the other thing, just to close on the race and equity conversation, not only are we working with you individually to compile your wishes and desires to bring forward an item at the next council meeting, we're also working internally inside these walls. We, as you know, we have what we call a Workforce Strategic Plan, or WSP, and there's a task force, a subset of staff that are assigned to that group. And Erin and myself has tasked that group with leading the charge on looking at this effort and coming up with a game plan and a strategy to address that issue inside these walls, so that we can educate ourselves and bring ourselves current with all the practices and everything that's going on in that arena, really, before we start to look outside. We want to make sure we're, we're covered inside before we do that. So I wanted to make sure you and the community were aware we're doing that as well.
Thank you, Greg. The opportunity is here, and this is a time, I think, that we have not seen. And I think we need to take full advantage of it, and everyone's willingness to get together and work together to solve issues that have been, you know, longstanding issues, not just in, you know, not our community necessarily, but all communities. So it's, it's systemic across the United States. So, and we are determined to move forward and to find solutions and be inclusive, and make sure that every Temecula resident has a voice and a strong voice. So Peter, anything? City Attorney's Report?
No report this evening.
Nothing for you? So I'll have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. And we stand adjourned. Thank you.